Okay, do we have any additions to the agenda for routine administrative management or pressing matters that would require ratification at a future meeting?
I do not.
Anyone else? Okay, approved minutes of December 17th. Need a motion?
Motion to approve minutes of December 17th.
Second? Second. Discussion, corrections, revisions, omissions?
Sure, I have a question. Under 3A, Stefan has shown, written in the minutes, Stefan asking the same question twice with different answers.
Correct, inside would be eliminated... It would be reduced, but it wouldn't be eliminated. It's, they're supposed to be the same, I see why you're saying that. The amount is reduced, what's incorrect actually is the percentage would be reduced. It's that the dollar amount would be reduced, so if you like, we can change that.
I think it should reflect what took place. Did he ask the same question twice with two different answers?
Well, it's not two different answers, it's...
Well, why would we list the same question twice? Guess that's the part that I...
Oh, I'm sure it was, I don't doubt that it was asked twice. The question was, would it be eliminated, and then I said it would be reduced, and they said, would it be eliminated, and then I said, no, it would not be eliminated. But it would remain at 50%, but be assessed on a lower amount.
Yeah, that is strange, you said it twice.
Right, so I, well, I didn't answer it as you wanted the first time, so you asked it twice, which is perfectly fine. But the confusing part is, it says the percentage be reduced, and that's not correct. I can go back and look at the tape and see what actually said, and either leave it as that, or what I suspect I said was that the percentage on the amount would result in a lesser dollar amount. Do you know what I mean? So if you want to amend the motion to say correct, the minutes...
Yeah, just so it's accurate, that paragraph in particular needs to reflect that.
So do you want to amend your motion, Stefan, to say to correct?
Yeah, to reflect, to correct 3A section from the minutes of December 17th.
Any other questions?
Minutes to terminate this second, are you good with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that, it's fine. Okay, guys, this is a phone, uh, meeting, Susan's on the phone, we need to voice vote to accept the minutes, so all those...
Stefan, hi.
Stefan, hi.
Hey, Donald, hi.
Peter Galk, hi.
Stefan, hi.
Okay, public comment items not on the agenda, three minutes per person. Which does matter, I assume.
Yeah.
You're not on the agenda for action, so you have the floor.
I'm here to try and lease the property to the town owners who are rocking in the meeting house for a three-year term.
Okay, that was discussed at our last meeting, and we decided to change it from a three to a one-year term?
Well, that was brought up, I guess, about one year ago.
Yeah, we waited a year back from you basically, to see what your concern for the one year...
My concern is that it's going to take more than one year for me to recoup the money that I'm going to put into that field, if I were to line and stuff like that. So I figure I need a three-year term to offset what I've done for a lease and whatever else. And it's always been a three-year lease when given, developed, and I had it the last three years. Lincoln is fast, so...
Yeah, I know.
It's all gone on the meeting house, so... I would like it to remain three years.
Yeah, I don't have to talk to that, at least with me tonight, do you know if that was, the amount of money was per year or a three-year period?
No, the amount of money was per year, but the term was for three years.
Originally, yeah, we had talked about it.
It was $300 a year for, per year for three years, so it was $900.
Yeah, okay, I just want to make sure we're all clear on that.
Yeah, for three years, $900 for three years.
Right, $300 a year.
We agreed, the new motion discussion was $300 one year.
Correct, and to go back to Mr. Sunette and talk to him about it, and there was another issue too, that was to restrict it to hay only.
Right, exactly, I don't have...
No, no, there was a question, there was a spreading, you know, contaminants on the field to move the corn, such as, you know, weed control and stuff like that. There's a place, someplace that came up with some problem with the corn, or the material after the corn had been taken out.
Right, I don't, I don't plan on anyone...
They tried to reuse the ground, and because of the chemicals that were there, they couldn't use it, so we just wanted to make sure that that was in there to clarify that. Okay, it's not on the, on the, on the agenda for action, so we really can't take any action on it tonight, and we can probably take it up at the next meeting, 21st, and make the motion and go from there, if the board willing to go along with a three-year term.
Well, maybe we could get both parties here to have the discussion.
Both parties?
Well, we were getting some suggestions from, about cemeteries filling up, we might need it, was the whole, the whole purpose of not signing a three-year term.
Malcolm was okay with the three years, he had, he's the one who brought up the corn, so he would be fine, I believe, but we can send it back to Malcolm, we can, we can bring it back to a three-year term and make sure...
I would like us to sign it for three years, and if you figure in two years that it's not going to work, if you want to, you know, like the cemetery or whatever. So anyways, you know...
Going off of what I remembered them talking about, but if he's okay with it, then I think we'll just bring it to the next meeting, and we can take action on it.
Okay. So you might make a thought, curtain bolt, or something like that.
Yes, definitely, it was already on my list for next meeting, yes, okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments? Management report.
Okay, um, Tom, do you have one? Uh, the VCRD brought from my community in rural development, the second community meeting, step two, is tomorrow in the Town Hall Theater at 6:30, so...
I heard that coming.
Yeah, yeah, glad we found the place, and glad it's in the building where it was advertised, so everybody needs to show up. There will be refreshments, including sales by parking sessions. Just for the board, information on the constable is in your packet, just FYI, there's no action on that tonight, but just some information. I just want to let you know, the Howard Lock parking lot, I don't know if any of you have been behind there, but we did do the improvements that we talked about, so that snow removal would be possible, and fire truck access would be possible also, and it's working, it's working well. And then, just heads up, the nuisance ordinance will be effective January 18th. So, it's good then.
Is it listed?
What do you mean?
Is that listed on the website for folks who haven't taken a look at it?
The nuisance ordinance, should be, yeah, I'm surprised it's not here, but yes.
Last time I'm asking you.
Yes, it has been, and it should still be, we need to put the flow chart up there, so they can see how it works, and you need to appoint safety officers, which will be at the next meeting, I'll tell you about that when we talk about the next meeting.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the budget review, do we want to do that now, or do we want to do the other articles and come back to the budget at the end? Sue, you have any comment on that?
No, I mean, it would sound like the town meeting article should happen after we do the budget review, at least that.
From down there, we have the development office and the access permit and couple of appointments.
Yeah.
And we get those off the...
I mean, those, I think we could probably get out of the way, but did we have to do that before?
Yeah, we would have had to do that before, right. So, alright, we'll go into budget review then.
Okay, so we'll just give you a little quick overview?
Yeah, and you have a new sheet, everybody has a new sheet, let's think about, you may have...
Yeah, too much to say.
I didn't print it.
I didn't print it, awesome.
Let's do these first.
Do you, do you want to print it out? The new budget sheets, did you guys...
You have one? No, I'll use this one.
Yeah, the only difference...
I have notes on my other one, but this one's not great.
Well, it's just one number, that's not great. Okay, yeah, I mean, I can just tell that over there downstairs?
I'm all set.
Yeah, Shannon, let's just, it's just the number, instead of 2.08, it's 2.84, that's the only change.
Nope, to a week, to a week order.
Uh, can you put the data?
Yeah.
No, we're sitting right in front of them.
Okay, you have the floor?
Yep, yep, thank you, we wanted to first go over the total revenue and the total operating expenses, just to give you a general idea.
So they're putting it on the screen, unfortunately we can't see it from where you're at.
Okay. Is Fact TV there?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I should be able to see it on that, if they're, if they're aimed at.
About an 11-hour time difference, so...
Currently, not aimed at, but it will be, I guess, and we're gonna...
And seeing what we'll be able to do is actually go directly from the computer to the camera, without going through this, so it'll be a much clearer picture. Well, how about, I tell you what the components are?
Technical literature, so...
In the meantime.
Not coming up.
I'll just, I'll provide an overview of what we've done, and then we'll get that. Just the, a reminder, the 2019 grand list value was $4,668,910, and I'm just mentioning that because it was a 2% increase over 2018, which was a nice thing to happen, but we're not expecting that to happen again, a small increase will probably happen, but not the $9 million that we had, that we had last year, so the current budget is based on no increase to the grand list. The 2019 town tax rate, so the current, and the budget that we're in now, was 1.0778, and town taxes were 31% of the total tax bill, so when you get your tax bill, most of that is education, which is typical, 31% is the tax bill, and that's for Bellows Falls Residential, there's actually six categories, so rather than tell you all six, we just picked Bellows Falls Residential, because that's the largest category. So the 2020 town tax rate proposed for all funds is, this is the sheet you should be looking at, this one, the two green, is 1.1062, which is an increase of .0284, which is 2.84 cents. That translates to about, for a home value at $150,000, that is an increase of about $42 a year, or between $3 and $4 a month. So, as you recall, we were at a much higher rate when we started, so some of the things we did to bring the rate down were two increases on recycling and garbage fees. First, the C&amp;D fee was increased from 10 cents to 15 cents per pound, garbage fee increased by 25 cents a bag. Peter Golod obviously is very involved at the recycling center, and there may be some additional increases that will be proposed, because you have the flexibility to do that really anytime, but this budget is based on those increases happening at least by July 1st, to be effective July 1st. Refinancing the fire truck debt, that decreased expenditures by $100,000, that was a huge component. Don't look at the greens, don't... So we saved 2.14 cents on that, and we'll talk more about debt and long-term financing at the next meeting. This meeting is focused on things that affect next year's tax rate, so the first year, obviously, debt affects next year's tax rate, but the concept of smoothing it out and making the high highs and low lows go away, that will be discussed at the next meeting. Land use revenue, that's one of the categories of revenues, just based on actuals, we increased that $15,500. We removed the Town Hall Reserve Fund increase to a separate article, that decreased expenditures $20,000. Removed the fire equipment, this is the Rockingham Fire Equipment, to an article, that decreased expenditures $12,500, .27 cents. And meeting house improvements to, also an article, which decreased expenditures $22,000. So, this is the proposed town revenue estimate, and you can see, this is just general.
Are you all done with that sheet, or are we going to your computers?
I was going to, but actually, this is a good segue, because this doesn't, oh no, it doesn't include all the funds. I'd rather go to this, if that's okay, because it's a general overview, and I can go through it pretty quickly, and then we can go to the highway.
Does everybody have one of those? I don't know.
We did, it's a print, but they're going to change depending on the decisions you make, this is just based on...
Okay. And we'll get to, this is just a general update on where we are, and it shows property taxes are 75% of the revenue.
And that's without those three articles being moved, though?
No, this is with those articles being moved.
This is with the revised budget we have in front of you, you have all these numbers, they're just in a, they're in the budget.
We just made these today, so that it would, so that you could just get another view of what's happening. You're not approving this or anything, it's just another way you look at it. Like, like, for example, you can see, the revenue source recycling solid waste goes up 22%, that's, that shows you the impact of those fee increases. Property taxes up 1.9%, so that's just under 2%, so property taxes is usually what you look at. These are the pie charts that we did for the, for the town report last year, we're just trying to do things earlier. So, so the takeaways on this are recycling, solid waste going up 22%, property taxes going up 1.9%, miscellaneous is going up 11%, that's worthy of note. So, let's go to expenses. So then, this is the operating budget, so you can see, general fund and highway fund are an equal percentage of the budget, at 40%. Debt service, we've talked about how the reason, one of the big reasons the property tax is relatively high here compared to other towns is the debt service. It's 16%, we had 17%, next year it changed slightly, but that should really be at 8 or so percent, it should be below 10%. So that's something that is important to talk about, and that's what we're going to talk about next, next meeting, is debt service. And then cemetery, 1%, and equipment fund, 3%, so those are relatively steady. So that's all we need to do with this. So now we'll go back to that sheet. So, at the bottom of the sheet, the front page is general fund, and the back page is highway fund. If you did want to further reduce the tax rate for the general fund, you could do a transfer from the fund balance of 50, or whatever amount you want, but $50,000 saves a little over one cent, we're not recommending that, because we think we need to get out of the transfers. We did, two years ago, we did $100,000, this year we're doing $50,000, we think we ought not to do that.
But you're also considering the High Hill project that's taking $120,000 out of there too, so...
Yeah, I think that would be out of the highways or fund balance. Right, oh, there are some uses of fund balance that we're talking about.
You just said, you'd like to not do that.
Right, we don't want to do 100, or, this $50,000, the ones that we're proposing are less, are much less. The fire equipment is, I think that's the only one, I think the meeting house improvements come from a reserve fund. Where's meeting house from?
We're just hoping to remove everything out of the house, so that we can leave it, and also...
Yeah, so fund balance, we can show you that, but we're not recommending $50,000, but you're free to do it, we wanted to give you options. So, go to highway fund, and these are just overall, this is the high-level picture, and then we can go to the line items. So highway fund, so the proposed tax rate, .5890, and then included in this proposed budget are two deductions, each of $50,000. One is to reduce paving next year, and the other is to reduce contract sidewalk services, so both of those together save 2.14 cents. Option, additional options, one is to postpone equipment purchases, decrease expenses $65,000, I think we talked about that at a previous meeting, that would save 1.39 cents, we're not recommending that, because then we get off-schedule and impact future equipment, and then we're not recommending any positions to be eliminated, that hasn't really been discussed here, but I know it's been discussed elsewhere.
The refinancing of the fire trucks, from the motion or the article passed that here for a five-year bond, and we're looking at refinancing it and doing a five-year payment, and a balloon payment, and a six, a six-year bond, correct, is that right?
Yes, it was, it's a second, five years.
Are we legal to do that, because...
So, that's not quite accurate, it's all together going to be a five-year loan, the balloon payment in the fifth year, it was just refinancing, so that we didn't have even payments every year for five years. We consulted with the attorney, we consulted with the bank, and with the LCT.
Which attorney do we consult with?
Our, we talked to the town. And then, one suggested the other, and then the other suggested the other, so we consulted with all of them, and the financing agreement itself allows for refinancing.
Okay, 'cause the thing is, if we intend to do that, I don't want to get to the town meeting and find out like we did a couple of years ago, when you financed two fire trucks, to try and get them for five years or 10 years, and we found out, can't do that, why don't we make sure that, if we're going to do it five years, that we can do it that way? And I know it came from, I think it was Gillis or something, with the, who was attorney in the state office, that we found that out at the last minute, and I don't think we want to go through that again, so I'm just trying to make sure that we're perfectly clear on that.
Yeah, the next select board meeting, I'm going to refinance paperwork too.
The, dealing with the bank is one thing, but I just want to make sure that I thought...
I can bring you the letters from the LCT, if you're doing that, you gotta have a bond, now you got a bond for... It's not a bond, we didn't vote to bond.
No, I, thank you for letting us know that.
Just trying to make sure we got it covered, because I don't want to, you know, then we're gonna have to reboot, so... Okay, anybody have any questions so far?
So far, or where are we at here?
Well, what she's, well, if we could get to that...
Yeah, so that's the overview, so...
If you had any questions, I'll be going with you.
Now would be a good time to go through.
On her menu drop-down?
Yeah.
Yes. So, we kind of breezed through it, I think we should spend a little more time on it, perhaps discuss the items rather than just read them. And I'd like to go back to this sheet here, tax rate setting sheet. Where if you look, 2008, the grand list, I'll make this quick, 2018, the grand list, $82,000 difference, roughly, in my head math. Over to the, what's essentially spending, 2008, 2018, $2 million difference. Which I've said since I've been on this board, that my, the taxes here have doubled in the last 10 years. And if you're, if you're, essentially revenue went up $82,000, what we're spending, an additional $2 million, I think that's where we need to look at, is our spending. And if someone can explain that differently to me, then I'm all ears, it's fair. 2008 had the same property value, you're spending $3 million, 2018, same property value, you're spending $5 million. It goes up and up and up, and when you said earlier in your statement that it's only a $154,000 home only pays $54 more a year, so add it up to how many years it's been going up and up and up for these people? So I think we really need to look at our spending. And I also feel like moving something, moving spending to an article, isn't reducing our tax rate. Still paying, the people are still paying for it, so unless we're reducing it somewhere else, we're not doing anything to the tax rate.
Do you want me to do the second one first?
Sure.
Totally agree, it depends on where the funding comes from, like with the fire trucks, the board last year felt that it would be better to have the town meeting reps, or the town meeting people, vote themselves on whether...
That was a lot of item which we planned for.
No, I understand.
That you're just trying to shift...
No, but...
$32,000 out of your budget, to make it look like it's less.
But what I'm saying is, or what I'm trying to say is, the fire truck is an example of an article that actually does increase the taxes, because we got hit this year, that's how we had that nine-cent increase when we started out, the big part of that was the fire trucks. And so, that, when you take it, when you adopt something like that, and it hasn't increased tax, then you're just kicking it down the road. Most of these, and we can get in particular on these, the meeting house one, and the Town Hall Reserve, those are using money that has already been set aside, so it's money that exists for that reason, that people paid taxes on years ago, and it's just sitting there not being used. So it doesn't make sense to tax people further when the money's there to be used for that purpose, so that's why those are different. So it really depends on the source of the reserve.
Right.
Or of the article, I'm sorry, whether the source is reserves or new taxes.
But two and a half cents of that was the fire trucks, of the nine cents that you're speaking of?
Yes.
Two, just two and a half cents?
What was it, two and a half?
I thought it was two and a half, let's not map it though. It was $130, well, it would have been $136,000 a year, which was roughly about two and a half cents. But I think the town is on the right track, because if these go to article and get voted, then it's creating the purpose of eliminating the $20, $30, $34, $40.
You're just shifting lines, you're moving it somewhere else, which is... Do you have any comment to this, my first statement?
I would love it if we had, if we could go back and find out what happened from...
Well, we can't, we can't.
Well, actually, we can, it just takes a lot of time.
All we can do is right now, that's why we're here right now?
No, I, I.
So someone whose value of their home hasn't increased, how can we keep asking them to pay more and more and more and more and more?
We're trying our best to hold, hold the cost down. Um, things cost more, I mean, people cost more, um, salt costs more. But we have made reductions in a lot of areas, and we're always looking for efficiencies, and we're not, this isn't, um, something that we just throw at any word, word.
Not, not to defend the position anyway, Peter, man, but just to sort of explain some things, that you've got the town hall renovation bond that was in there. As Wendy said earlier, that, that the debt service, it, it does have a big effect. And the town hall renovation bond that took place for the theater, and that, that's not going to go done until twenty twenty-five. The library bond was twenty thirty-two, it's not going to expire till twenty thirty-two. That's ten cents right there out of your tax money. You have to understand that you're not going to be taxually at least until twenty twenty-five.
So in the meantime, do you feel it would be our, our best interest to level fund, perhaps reduce our spending?
Well, I, I'm getting to that, because the same thing holds true on the school board side, which really doesn't affect our town taxes. But they have central such a girder bond that does not expire until twenty twenty-five. That's another four cents on your tax bill, that does affect what you're paying. And the middle school is a, a, a rotting, both expire at the same time, twenty thirty-two and twenty twenty-five. So you're going to have that debt out there, six, twelve cents for both the, um, library and the school, middle school project. Twelve cents is going to be on your tax bill until twenty thirty-two.
We don't have control over those things, we, we sit on.
Well, you do when you vote.
We sit on this board, you do when you vote.
I'm just, I'm just bringing that up for that, and, and, and of course, we've, we've done some other things that, you know, the rec building, we have to repair that. The tank out in the dooryard, I mean, there's a lot of stuff, plus we started those on the equipment replacement process, that costs too much. I'm not defending the process, I'm just trying to explain it so people understand how we've gotten into our predicament here. So I do agree that we need to cut our spending, but, um, you know.
And Peter, can I just interject here that it's also, the, the town tax, taxpayers vote on these budgets as well. So they voted on those bonds, they voted on that debt.
Exactly, that's why.
And we're, we're dealing with it, and so the question is, to reduce taxes, do we want to reduce ser- reduce services?
Don't need to.
Do the taxpayers want us to reduce services?
Don't need to reduce services.
And in the town, town meetings, that hasn't been the case. They voted for these increases.
Fifty people.
Well, they, they're, they're the voters.
You don't, you don't need to reduce services. In any way.
Okay, so we want to continue on to the spreadsheets.
Sure, and just, just a general comment, that the other way to reduce taxes, which is what happened last year, was to increase the grand list, to increase the value of the grand list. Which we have a lot of opportunity for that here. I mean, it went up nine million dollars last year, which was huge. Okay, so we're going to the.
Well, if you actually, I don't know where you get your nine million dollars from, but if you look at the numbers you go on there. You start off with four million, five hundred thousand dollars, and end up in twenty twenty, or four million, six hundred sixty-eight, it's only a hundred sixty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars less increase in the grand list. I know that it's a, it's a taxable grand list.
Yeah, so there's decimals, but of that, um, nine million, the crumble was three million of it. So, paid thirty thousand in taxes, which is thirty thousand that other people didn't have to pay.
Spreadsheet. Anybody have any questions in notes, because I do.
Okay, so what we did here?
Which?
Try me if you want to, the, um, the colors.
Are we done with this?
You want to continue?
Did anyone else have any questions with that?
Well, all of that is in the spreadsheet.
Right, I understand, but it's, it's, it's simplified here, we have many different options with the recommended savings or potential savings. So with, where does it stop to get your two point eight four?
Right at the, before option to further reduce the tax rate. And all of the, where it says included in January third proposed budget, and then it has one, two, three, four, five, six things. Those are all things, except for the land use revenue increase, those are all things that, that we discussed and you guys approved.
You have any other questions?
No.
On that sheet?
Not on that sheet, at this time, no.
So any questions on the options menu sheet?
No, I'm on that right now, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, let's go to the spreadsheet.
Okay, so the first page on the spreadsheet is revenue, general fund revenue. And, um, that light yellow shaded place where there's nothing, that's the elevator revenue that is supposed to come. Um, but it hasn't yet, and, um, we just.
We're working hard with the apple to get it, it's our money, she's been submitting her reimbursement. So we still have that projected to come, it just wasn't budgeted, it wasn't, it was, it hit expenses last year, and it will hit revenue this year.
Um, and then the blue one, a little farther down, that's that land use item that has, you have not seen that increase before, the hundred and fifty thousand. But you can see, if you look at the actual, um, current year is a hundred and forty-nine thousand, so it's not much of an increase, go to one fifty, which is just rounding. And then the north storefront, that revenue item, um, we think it is, obviously it's going to be less since we've had daily changes in the north storefront.
We anticipate it to be thirty-five hundred instead of the budgeted seventy-four.
Want to go to the next page?
Do they just ask questions?
Uh, I, I don't know, do you want to ask questions, or do you want to?
Any of these on your storefront down there?
Yeah. There's, there's, uh, two potential tenants. One who used to run a store in town, and one that would be, um, uh, someone expanding from elsewhere.
And we put out an RFP, recycling register.
Yeah, there's an RFP responses, I do get it on the fourth.
Why everybody is last anticipating next year, rent's going to go down?
Um, no, the rent would be, um, uh, higher than it was in the past.
I was just being conservative, in case something didn't transpire by July first, and it would just give us a buffer, because it works revenue.
Okay, so the next page, the blue stuff is the recycling, which you've seen before.
Okay, um, let's look at the, under recycling, soda cans. We're only estimating forty-five hundred dollars, or, for income, but to look past twenty years, it's been pretty close to six grand. I know it's not a big chunk of money, but.
Yeah. We had a reason for that, too.
Oh, that's right, I, we did a reason for that.
So.
We can look at that again, I think Gary, Gary thought it was going down.
Yeah.
It was, I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly what, but Gary thought it was going down.
In talking with Gary down the recycle, I believe that we used to take them to Brownboro, and we got, if they were nickel, we got a nickel, we got what they were returnable for. The price, and now some of the alcohol liquor bottles were fifteen cents, so that's why those tend to like fishing bottles out of the, out of the container. Um, but I understand now that they don't take them to Brownboro, we had to go to Springfield, and I think there was a price of kind of three cents or something like that.
You know where else, um, one of our volunteers used to take that and bring us back the money, and he can no longer do it. So now the person who's returning them is taking a percentage of it.
Right.
So, um, that's assuming, but you're right, I think it's the three to five cent difference, they get two cents, we get three cents.
Yeah.
So that's our assumption there.
And there are, other than the two cents or increases on, on recycle, I mentioned on the menu sheet, there's some other ones we've been discussing. Uh, I've got to talk to Gary about it first, but there's, um, white goods, all refrigerators and things down there, maybe going on a couple bucks. Uh, couches, things like that. Where for the lowest man on the tour, the old place, us gets thirty bucks for, for a washer or something like that, but leave down there, we're only getting fifteen. So I don't think two dollars is going to hurt anybody. Anyway, okay, that's all we got on that page, unless someone else has anything.
All right, so everybody have anything on page three? Theater income, licenses and permits? Transfer, here's the transfers at the bottom, transfer from meeting house reserve, transfer from unsafe building reserve. So those do not increase the tax rate, because they come from funding that's already in, are in the bank, actually. So then, okay, go to page four? So then we just adjusted the salary here, um, is this an actual salary, so it was a, there was a decrease?
Going down to finance office, office training. We're budgeting a thousand dollars in, in the past year, the highest it's ever gotten was five hundred. Is there, somebody going to go to school again this year?
Somebody do.
We're not going to school, but I've been going to a lot of.
Yeah, well, there's nothing, that's why I say it's, we've gone, it's twenty nineteen, actual is four, five hundred, I know.
But I was only here for half of it.
Yeah, I know, that's why I just wondered, so. Same with, uh, reconciling items, I know that could be a, could be anywhere at this point, but.
So those are little items in the audit that, instead of getting through to find ten dollars, they here there, that's the bucket they put them in.
I was just thinking, maybe we could cut that down to five hundred instead of a thousand. I know we're nitpicking, but if we can do a bit of help, there are yes.
Yeah, so you're not suggesting cutting the training though, right?
No, not, not the shoes.
Yeah, but I would like, um, tax sales, they just went to tax sale two hundred, which is really good training.
We'll get to that one, so I got a note on that one.
Okay.
Somebody ready to go to page five? Anything you want to mention here, what is it?
Um, no, so this is Lester's town clerk's office, we didn't make any changes since the last time you saw it. And our, our office operations.
I know there's a request in here for town clerk's office for, uh, salary increases. Just a wild thought here, um, probably merit versus a straight two percent. But then, then you get to who decides on the merit, uh, it's kind of a tough choice, like if you're not present, going to the five percent. Uh, and especially if we're going to do two percent on anybody else, it's kind of.
I only have two percent in the budget, Catherine had asked for five percent.
Right, I know, that's, but you only have two in you now?
I only have two percent.
Okay, well, I, I'm just, just trying to, the rest of it should be merit, I guess, if we want to play with that, that's just an option, something to think about.
Yeah, the board could.
There's no merit in here for anybody.
No, I know, but I mean, say that's in lieu of the two percent flat across the board, I was just thinking a lot of. Okay. Let's go down to office operations, town hall, we've got ten thousand, six hundred dollars listed for server hardware software, what's going on there?
So we re, re, we reallocated the Dominion Tech into buckets that, so that they match their invoices in our contract. So the overall amount for office operations has gone, um, down.
Yeah, I know.
There over a year, but I just reallocated it so our accounts would match invoices, so.
So the same, but the IT security is the same thing, okay?
Correct.
Uh, they're just there, it's all.
And this will be the second year of that contract.
I think we need to investigate, it's a little high for my liking, but that's okay.
Behind the contract.
Some different discussion.
We're in a contract.
Right?
We're in a contract.
I know, yeah, but if you can think of others going forward.
For what's a.
I think at the end of the turn, it's a three year, I think at the end of the turn, it would make sense, because there were costs that they didn't, they gave up. In exchange for getting the contract.
Office equipment and service, um, we got five thousand, I don't think, I, I've gone back, it's never gone over four. Maybe it dropped to four thousand there instead of five, this is the last line on page.
Yeah, we could probably, as long as that's not, I think that's great.
Anybody else on page five? Page six? Planning studies. We plugged in the thirty-five hundred, twenty nineteen, we only spent seven thirty-three, is there something going on there that we don't know?
Planning.
Planning stage, uh, studies, it's, uh, sick rather, student. We anticipate spending thirty-five hundred this year. Chuck?
May I?
Okay.
Isn't that, Peter, isn't that something we get a grant from when a regional force, or it's a, a what?
I don't know, it's on Mass and Chuck, but it's only seven hundred and thirty-three dollars, so I don't think it's a grant.
Yeah, excuse me.
Well, I don't know if we got the grant then, because, well, I don't, I don't know, actually, um.
Okay, well.
Because this is part of the, uh, is this part of our, our rewriting of our regional plan, or is there something different?
Chuck?
Thank you, I didn't want to just jump in the conversation without being asked. So the thirty-five hundred dollars is, um, updated to town plan, any special studies that we need. If we do not have to spend it, we absolutely do not spend it. So when you see seven thirty-three, that's an indicator that so far, we have been able to defray all those costs. Um, the planning commissioners are working a little bit more than they'd like to work, but otherwise, they work for free. And, uh, we don't need to dip into that money yet. We did receive a grant, um, from the state, that matching funds will come from that. Um, that award was announced the last month for establishing a common adjacent to the square, so that is a catch-all item. But again, we, just like the law, um, the legal side of things, if we don't need to spend that money, we won't.
Okay, let's go back up to the internship, is that a absolute necessity? I know we discussed it last meeting about, if it's a student coming in to learn about the process, uh, they can use it, the time to earn credits, if I'm not mistaken, versus paying them?
I can take this from my chair.
Uh, I don't, I don't know about that, I mean, that would depend entirely on what school they're going to and so forth. Um, the planning commission discussed this at length during one of our meetings, and, um, we, uh, there was only one dissenting vote, only commissioner, Deborah White. Uh, the rest of us felt strongly that we wanted to have paid interns. This year in particular, our schedule is to have drafts of each chapter of the new town plan, ready for public outreach, ready to present to the public, uh, by midsummer. And we're going to follow, uh, procedures sort of like what you're seeing with these community visits. Have, have large gathering, promote it, so forth and so on. Give everybody a copy of a couple chapters at a, at a time, and really try and get public feedback, uh, maybe do another survey and so forth. We're all volunteers, and.
I know where that's going. I feel what everyone's saying.
Yeah, I, I know, I know, and, um, we just, uh, just last Saturday, we had a day-long meeting downstairs here, you know. Most of us on the mission are working, I only work part-time, but, um, most of the people work full-time. So we could really use some extra help with that, and we could really use someone that we can actually hire, rather than just sort of begging someone to come in and volunteer. Who may or may not have any qualifications, we need someone who can do web design, we need someone who can help with the website updates, and help with all kinds of, uh, preparations for these meetings. And we feel strongly, uh, after our discussion, if you want someone like that, you need to be able to offer them something. These college students, a lot of them come. These college students, a lot of them come and expect to work in the summer for money, for books and tuition, or whatever they have to, their college expenses. And it's important to offer them something. We're just talking about minimum wage, maybe an average out of twenty hours a year, I think it said, something like that. So that's our feeling on that.
Commissioners, if I may?
Certainly.
Backed off of the proposal, what you're seeing is about forty percent of what was originally suggested. So we backed off ours, we backed off pay, we just, minimum wage, and that would be only, the only expense. There are requirements, so just like the special studies, if we don't find a resident, a rock, an individual that we know can contribute to their community and so forth, then this will be, this position will remain vacant.
They don't even ask, if we have an assistant planner or whatever in the office out there, that's something that wouldn't work in that neighborhood.
This is a person that's gonna be running around, out in the field, hopefully doing what some of our commissioners have done so well. And the role of an administrator, secretarial services, often to be in the office and be the, somebody present, so. I'm not saying that's impossible, it was just something we didn't think was a good use of resources.
Throw that out for.
Agreed.
Figure, anybody has that any work, so far? I guess a model one. All right, let's go down to, it's just, I'm not sure, maybe it's a full call on my part, but. Tax sale expense, you've got to say there's a fifty thousand showing, but you're anticipating funding ten this year? And nothing next year, but you've got title searchers to do it. You're a con for that? I pay somebody in there.
Yep.
Those houses.
Are they gonna be free? Or you include them on the legal services?
No, we, we would be doing this year before July first.
So the ten thousand dollars that you see in the FY twenty, that's for that?
All right.
And then just, can I just point something out about tax sale? First of all, every time we talk about it, people are reminded that they are being charged one and a half percent a month. So eighteen percent a year is what you're being charged if you have outstanding taxes, so pay your taxes. But in FY seventeen, we spent fifty-two thousand and recovered the tax sale revenue.
Well, over a three-year period, from the tiny tax sale started until the end, we spent just over a hundred thousand, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and we recuperated a hundred and one thousand the last time we did a tax sale.
Yeah, so we're trying to, this is actually an area where we're trying to spend a lot less money and get the same amount of revenue. So this is an example of, of what you're looking for, is where we're making your tax dollars go farther. Your tax dollars who are funding this office. And that's why it was important to get the training done. And we think it's probably logical to do a tax sale every other year, is what we're thinking now. But that's, that decision will be y'all's decision. The schedule of it, but one is coming up, so now's a good time to pay tax. And every time we talk about it, we get more revenue in, which is good.
Okay, any other questions on that page? Go to seven. On recycle, do we, if we, you had any success, success getting another person?
Yeah, we have.
Only got three down there.
You have four.
Well, you got four you're paying, but.
Successfully.
Because we're losing, we're losing one, or possibly losing one.
Volunteers.
Yeah.
I wasn't asked to.
No, I know, I'm just saying, uh. Because if those four are being paid, and we don't, we only have, actually, you don't have Brad in there, correct? There's one?
Yep.
Okay.
So we need volunteers, tell them.
Definitely, we need volunteers. There'll be a fresh place coming up, begging for people, but anyway.
What was the question?
Extra person down there. I thought we were still looking for another one.
You want a fifth, eighth person?
I don't know why, but, because Bob's been there anyway, he was a low man on a pole, that's why he's, we changed him. And there, Brad, two of the hires, I thought they were looking for a third one, I thought Gary, I don't know.
Well, then we would need to increase this budget to fifty-one thousand.
Yeah, this is just based on the four people you can see in the description.
Okay.
So this is new, is correct. And then that postage was reduced.
Going down to the compact, the maintenance line. We've been budgeting five thousand, seventeen, we spent sixteen, twenty-one. Next year, eighteen, we spent seventeen, which I assumed was gonna be for the, the, we put in there? I'm just guessing. I thought it was later than that, maybe it was eighteen.
No, I think, wasn't that what we had to do, all the electricity and everything, put it in? That what we put it in with that fiscal year?
You put the second one in just before I got on board, so that would have been the summer of eighteen.
Definitely.
So that might, that might be a priority too.
Cause we added one, right?
Then you go down to where the, it's, doesn't, hasn't gone over five thousand dollars, I don't know, maybe there's some savings there. Put it down to five instead of seven.
Well, we have two of them now, to meet expectations here.
Truthfully, I don't think I've seen anybody down there putting any grease on them.
So then I have a mount, or maybe.
I can tell you right now, because there's one day down here, we don't think this thing was gonna move.
Everybody doing anything about it?
Why not to do it?
I often bring my own grease gun down.
I'm not, I'm not.
Serious question.
It's what's done.
Thirty thousand dollar piece of wood.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I, I just made it.
I don't know if Gary said anything, I'll let the man down, just want to get down there.
Does the page, page people down there do anything about it?
I don't control employees, so I can't answer that question. Okay, other than that, um. I noticed the expense, one of the recent construction demo. His house been higher than what we're budgeting.
What are you?
Twenty nineteen was sixty-five thousand. We budgeted fifty, we're budgeting fifty-five this year, I'll bet it's gonna be close to sixty-five or so, which is one reason why we're increasing the, the C and D rate.
Right.
Just so everyone knows where that's coming from. Okay, let's go down to economic development. First one, I'm gonna throw on the table, was full-time equipment director.
Yeah, do you want me to, we think that's really important, do you want to put up that other chart?
Did we ever get the postage? I'm going to, a lot of these questions have been asked before, if we, I'm going to, well, don't see.
Right. We reduced it, the postage and the recycling expenses?
In the, in the postage, in the recycling expense, nobody knew what it was for. Postage, renewal advertising, we were mailing the.
Well, we had a question, we were gonna see if we could mail them, but the, the rest of the expense in that line is, um. In previous years has been postage or advertising, we've had to advertise for positions for the last couple of years now, so we brought it back down to five hundred.
And it, it should also be the advertising that we do, when we have different programs, like the hazardous waste collection and that kind of stuff. So we, we do want to do some advertising, we don't want to cut that as zero.
But we don't do any hazardous material down, so I'll turn on, on, at another facility.
I know, we don't do it there.
And they provide this, the sign.
But we want to let people know about it, and there may be other ways we want to let people know about it, so don't help it. Oh, yeah, so, this, oh, sorry.
Food compost, I know it's, we're doing it now as a service, but it's costing us two grand a year, probably, to get rid of it. I thought they were taking it for nothing, so I started looking at that line, so.
Well, the first year, we knew how much it was gonna cost, but it was a new law, so nobody knew who was gonna.
When they changed the, the, so as of July, this coming year, twenty-one, it's gonna become mandatory, so. I wonder if we need to be, unless the state changes the line again, legislative session's just starting, folks, so.
That's what we had discussed, but I hadn't, I didn't get to finish.
I don't know how, I'll have to talk to Gary about that, but I just thought that's a. So.
Can I finish?
Sure.
So we've talked, I didn't, we, we were gonna budget because it's not a law, and then we were gonna increase it. And it is a law, I don't think it needs to go through legislation, it goes into effect. So if we haven't anticipated increasing our compost expense, then we should. That's what we talked about last year, remember?
Yeah, I know, but I'm saying is that the state, what I'm saying about legislative, the state changed the vector date from one year to the next, so left, like, year twenty-twenty-one. They were gonna do it last year, and then they decided to hold off a year, because the, the composters were complaining that it was costing whatever. So they were putting, let us think about it, so they just take, put it off a year. Okay, getting back to, you ready to move along here? Go ahead.
Are we thinking we need to increase that expense?
The food compost?
More than two thousand?
I don't think we need to increase the expense, I think we need to take some, talk about revenue on that item, I don't find, I don't know how we do it.
Yeah, revenue, I think revenue would be complicated on that, because you'd have, you'd have to have somebody there, and Gary has to use the volunteers and staff. So, I mean, the one option we can discuss, not this year, but another year, is towns like Springfield charge their taxpayers for using this, um, service. We, we are only charging in-town residents, I mean, I don't know if that's a discussion we want to have in a future year, when we have a chance to look at recycling in total.
Kind of factored in, I thought that we weren't charging in-town residents because of part of budget and then on their tax goals, in terms of items under.
Well, we, we.
Well, no, I'm just saying, putting it out there, other towns do charge, and if, if this is costing, I'm not saying we do it, I'm just saying for a future discussion.
Yeah.
Because if we reduce the taxes, if it's, um, anyway, it's just something to put out there, so. That's why, I mean, charging for individual things like food scraps isn't as much of an issue if people are paying for the services altogether. But anyway, that's a future discussion, not now.
Not a problem.
Yeah, can I just add, right now, the deficit is just nine thousand dollars of recycling. Remember it was much more previously?
Yep.
Oh, no, it's not, okay. So it's negative fifty, nine plus four, so, so fifty-four, so it was a hundred.
Yeah, but that was more buying equipment, so now that the equipment purchase hopefully will work.
Yeah, yeah, so, so that's what the taxpayers are paying, is the fifty-two, fifty-two thousand, yeah.
Well, well, this increase, we'll lock that down some more too, so. We may not cover it all, but, but we're gonna get closer.
Okay.
Um, we're down to economic development, uh, full-time person, any comments from the board on that?
I will, but I think I'll go through that first. I have a comment, but you wanna go through that?
Yeah, I'd like to, because, um, this, right, right now, the economic development director is half-time. Um, that does make, he, he does have enough time to do some of the grants that not only his time gets reimbursed for, but also finance director's time and some of my time too. You have this chart in your packet, which shows grants, and this isn't even all of the grants, this is just what was easier to talk about. Ongoing grants are, are current grants, and the VOREC one is just about to be applied for. I won't go into this in terrible detail, but what's important, I think what would be important to you in terms of evaluating the value of the position, there's a short-term value and there's a long-term value. The short-term value in dollars to the town are these reimbursable amounts for administration.
Is that reimbursable provided you also do not secure the grant? Or is that only?
No, it's only if you secure it.
Right.
Right, right, but we, we also have, we have grants that he admin, he basically administers, the town used to administer from twenty years ago, right? I mean, really old stuff, um, so.
And it's actually reimbursable, money's for that?
Some, a little bit, not much, but, but that's work that needs to be done by someone, no matter what.
Right.
But, so there's, there's short-term value in terms of dollars that the town receives. There's also a short-term value just to the, to the people who get the services. I mean, he has folks who come here, who are looking on places to locate businesses, and, um, he provides. So that's obviously valued to them when we can help them find financing. Um, he serves as the staff to the revolving loan fund board, and to the V F A D C, and interfaces with the BIFTA folks, and just does a heck of a lot for thirty hours. We want to make him full-time so that he can do even more, which would increase the amount of grants that he can go for. So, so this is, these are the grants that we'd like to apply for. Um, many of them are, which I think are just typical, telling the, the mill repairs and things that we've been talking about. But there's also, if you look down, um, the projector, it's about a third of the way down. May first, twenty-twenty, it's a grant that we want to apply for, for the opera house. For a four K projector, which would bring it to another level, there's possible things we can do with the old projector. Um, he's available to, to help us with that fire station, that would help the, the village. The nuisance ordinance, we're going to need funding, because one of the nice things about the nuisance ordinance is it allows for the public option, where the town or the village could go in and actually make repairs. So we need funding to, to do that, or funding to make loans to individuals who want to repair their properties. Because we do know that there are people in town who can't afford to, to fix up their homes, and actually, they want to. Um, we can make long-term, very low-interest loans to those folks if we had funding to do it.
And what's the criteria for them to be applicable to apply for the loans?
Have to be a low and moderate income household.
Yeah, we have some other criteria too.
And what is that parameter, do you have that out, at the top here?
Um, eighty percent of median household income.
For Wyndham County, or?
For the county, right. I think they're generally.
Yeah, I, I don't have that number, but that's a, a threshold level for the grant. And then whatever policy the town puts in place to implement the, the penalty side of the nuisance ordinance, this provides, allows for the ability for folks to follow through on that, the enforcement rather than the penalty. And the only federal threshold issue is the low and moderate income, and, and who does the work. But town policy could set all of the other parameters.
Yeah, and town policy would set all the other parameters, we don't have that ready yet. For example, there might be certain areas that we want to focus on. There, there can be a lot of different criteria, and there should be. So then there would also be long-term impacts, which are the most important, like we're talking about CHROMA going up three million dollars last year. That was because of past, you know, years ago, economic development, uh, projects or efforts. So, if you can go down in that E column, we have, there's some updated numbers, yep, just go back one, but, because those, those are. Was that, that was a number, okay, so the first one is that one point three million, so that's an estimate for, what is that? So that's an estimate for, what is that?
So that's for, uh, for 21 out of the three. So the, um, the building spec that meets the design review district requirements for materials in tight and for the, uh, two prospective tenants, the two anchor tenants, um, it gave those criteria to the listers, and what they came back with was a, um, between 1.2 million and 1.6 million evaluation, and that, uh, that building is on half of the building lot, so when there's more tenants, the lot could be built out further. Um, and so the reason it's $1,371,300 is because the property is currently on the ground list for $3,700, so that, that's the difference in grandest value, um, in this column. Um, so, uh, so just like, uh, fill it, the concept of, uh, of filling the pipeline and stacking costs, just like, um, Wendy was describing, the, the debt service, if you have, um, or s, what, what our cost to operate the town is a hundred dollars a year, and then each year you add, um, uh, bonds or debt service that's gonna cost $10 a year for $20 a year, within five years, you've, all of a sudden, the same hundred-dollar operating cost, you have a hundred and fifty dollars of cost. So what this allows you to do is, um, is, uh, keep up with some of that, oh, the, the other piece, two, two thousand and eight, one dollar in 2008 is equal to a dollar nineteen in 2000, uh, currently. So, so the way to, um, keep up with the costs, um, without having to cut things is by increasing the grandness, and these are, these are long-term projects, so, uh, we have, uh, five different commercial industrial properties that over a, um, five to eight-year span, we can add back to the grand list, so this column shows, uh, and the reason I say long-term, like this, this project started, it's got on a little on a mention, but it started in 2013, and it's 2020 when, uh, we hope to be building this building, so that's seven years later. Um, but that same concept of stacking the pipeline, um, so every time we get one of these projects, they overlap, so the, the grants, applying for the grants, doing the administration, some of my hours get reimbursed over, as we administer the grant, we submit for reimbursement for the hours, but, um, but they're still ongoing while the next grant is applied for, and the next building project is in play, and so, so that piles up the time, but the, the long-term payout, so there, if you scroll down to the bottom, and of course, the, the further out the projects are, the more, um, wags they are. But still, there's a potential.
We updated it.
There's a potential five and a half million dollars on the five.
It's one column that we added, great.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just added that today, I just got the dollars back from the listers and, and put, so. I, I didn't have that.
But all that, again, is contingent if you actually have received the grants.
Yes.
So if we go to the full-time development, that's approximately thirty-nine to forty thousand dollars a year before you get into the benefits station, et cetera, et cetera.
Thirty-nine or forty thousand?
Well, thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-five, if you base it on a fifty-two hour week, it's twenty-five dollars and seventeen cents an hour.
Well, so, so I guess that.
The increase, the salary would be.
Does the salary part?
The salary is going up slightly. For full-time, it, this, also is assuming the two percent.
And the nice thing about full-time is we would get more than forty hours out of it. It's.
It's a salary position.
You know that we would.
Well, that's what he likes.
Yeah.
It's a difference of salary, you know, all you can do for a little way of on a pay.
You have a question? I'm ready to make my comment.
Go ahead.
So I think if we took away, I don't know how many there are on there, but bike paths, hiking trails, unnecessary, you can save twenty thousand right there, don't apply for those, focus your time on the other ones.
No, that's money we make from the grant industry.
I'm saying we don't need to be applying for grants for bike paths and hiking trails.
Yeah, that's. And you don't think it's a good sort, you don't think it's a good thing to do, or?
How is that helping tax dollars go down?
It helps value of properties go up, people really like recreation. That's why the state's doing that whole program, the, for outdoor recreation, actually, we, we'll talk about that.
Well, if you're learning the state, I'll do it, so.
Yeah, I know, I'm good on it.
I think that's a good place right there, to focus your.
Yeah, so just, I would like to respond to that comment before we went on, so, um, if you look at, um, uh, gross receipts between 2000 and 2017, um, they've dropped from a hundred forty-five million to a hundred and five million, and we have a really full, um, downtown, lots of merchants, and they struggle with the amount of our population and the amount of foot traffic, and, um, we, we benefit from the vibrancy of the village, how many people come here, shock, and, uh, developing the outdoor recreation program and having that as destination tourism, um, all of the trails that we're developing are really close to the downtown, and all of the folks that come in will add to the vibrancy, the foot traffic, and the economic activity in our town, and, um, uh, property values in Rockingham are, are lower generally in the state, so, um, a, a challenge that I discovered in trying to get investment in some of the properties is that, um, is that, it's because we have lower economic activity, and as that activity increases and there's more, um, attraction and demand for our, our properties, those values go up in terms of, um, uh, market rate to the rest of the state. So, so, um, so just that one thing of building out our outdoor recreation program filters through to a lot of areas of helping the, um, the economy of our town.
Well, that's how I feel, I don't think the, the full-time position is necessary.
I disagree, I, I think, I think it's beneficial to go to full-time, especially if we're now spending the, this time on this whole process with the, uh, community development, there's going to be funding opportunities that come out of that, and I think it's needed full-time.
I don't believe I.
My, uh, person in there, so, I mean, I, I think the benefit outweighs the, uh, I think we'll see a, we'll benefit from this. I like full-time, that's my view.
I am not interested in more staff, we have too much staff now. Half the budget is personnel, more personnel is not the answer.
I think looking to the future of the town is something that we're in charge of, and I think it is beneficial to have a full-time development director for that.
I disagree. We do not need more personnel, especially this year.
I, I kinda get the impression, Ben, what you're saying is you'd rather see certain items on this list focused on more than other items, and. I know last year I, I mentioned that I was looking for more tangible results, and I understand part of the economic barometer is what you have down here, downtown, but I'm, I'm looking at more of a broader perspective of what else we have, and creating tangible jobs for people that are in this community, to give them people, give them a, a, a revenue source to come down and spend money in, in our downtown district as well as elsewhere. I'm almost be applying to, to, uh, go again in another part, in the part-time capacity for another year and see how it works out, and I stated that it's nothing any different, I look at the grants, I understand there's a lot of administration in there, and again, you know, we heard a lot about grants last year, no insult to two gentlemen that sit on the board with me, but we didn't get any grants for the fire trucks, so that's two and a half cents. So I hear a lot about grants, but I think it's, it's, there's a lot of other people competing for those grants, and, you know, they, some of those get them, and we don't. Um, I, I kinda think, unless you're wrong, unless I'm interpreting you wrong, Ben, a grant probably for an economic development program for a pre-development facility is a lot more important to you than, uh, trails, although I realize it's an element, but I, I kinda tend to agree with my colleagues. I think it's how you, how you allocate the time, from where I'm looking at it.
Good on you. I'm not suggesting cut, I'm saying keep it, perfect, right, I didn't say cut the position. Increasing it to full-time, same discussion as I had last year, it's an important position. Increasing anything this year, I'm not interested in, instead of being more staff, I'm not interested in that. How, how, you said in the beginning, how much time do you have into this department?
Um, it depends on, I think he's asking, are you, you mean me?
You.
Yeah, um, depends on how you define economic development, I mean, when we talked about it, just like having good codes, nuisance ordinance, you can look at it as economic development.
How much do you feel you're involved in?
A fair amount.
What we're paying Gary to do.
A fair amount.
Fair amount.
Um, and it would help me to have him be full-time, I, I'm sure.
It wants to, you can spend more time on it together, or?
We would get more.
It would be less work for you.
We would get more done, because, um.
More done in what sense?
In sense of getting more grants, we're developing better relationships with the agencies.
To write grants?
Uh, yeah, and, 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 and just to respond, to, um, come up with the ideas, to just talk to the folks who are, who are doing the grants, yeah, I mean, we're actually getting a pretty good reputation.
So it's pretty good that, that you're involved in these parts, that if we had a different manager in place who didn't know a lot about economic development, or focused, it would be important to probably have a full-time.
I think the benefits of making him full-time would outweigh the cost by far.
I'm, I'm just, I don't know if.
But I'm, I'm happy to be doing what I'm doing, yes.
You're invested in, in focus on economic development?
Yes.
So having you here, working with Gary, would in sense, perhaps one might look, there's more value in that than having a full-time developer, um, with a manager who is focused on other things?
I don't know, I, I don't know if that would be the choice. Um, previous managers have been focused on, um, grant administration, which is a big part of economic development, and they've done more than I have in that part, in that area.
Yeah, I think Chip did a lot of, a lot of that.
Yeah. Because there's getting the grants, there's administering the grants, and then, you know, looking long-term. We'll, we'll see later on when you look at the.
We have a lot of administrators.
Yeah, there's a lot of administration, unfortunately.
We have a lot of administrators.
We have a lot of administrators?
We do, we have a lot of staff.
Uh, I, I, I don't think we're staff-heavy, um, I mean, it's, that's, government typically uses people to do its work. I mean, if we're, we are, we can't be automated, not yet, at some point maybe, um, the.
Any more questions on that item? Gary, can you kinda give us, I know you went over this one before, but refresh my memory, I guess, on this, uh, book walking tour in the YMCA, I guess, I'm, or why, why is that in there?
That's reimbursed by grants, that's, um, Susan Rain and all of that. Whatever we reduce that by, we are gonna reduce revenue by.
It's the Historic Preservation Commission, which is the certified local government program.
Did we make a decision, were, were we leaving that? Have they had, have they had written in, or are we producing it?
If you wanna make a decision, it's like, that's fine. I'm, I'm getting the sense of the board.
Or should we discuss it again in detail again?
I'm getting the sense of the board that they want us to kick the director half-time. So, if I, I wanna, if I may, well, exactly, the, the last time you, you were in here, there's some discussion on the YMCA building, could you elaborate on that, the specifics?
Um, so the reason the YMCA is in there, um, uh, one of the things that Historic Preservation does is, um, section 106, historic mitigation, when a, um, historic property is demolished, um, you do a s- archaeological survey of the site, was there any indigenous people's artifacts, burial grounds? That's basically all the YMCA is in there for us, for a survey of the site. Is that what you're asking, Steph?
Well, I'm just, so, that is, the YMCA building is designated some historical capacity, is what you're saying?
Uh, well, the, the neighborhood is, the whole area is, and so, um, part of, um, the archaeological, section 106 requirements in, um, Historic District, they can, um, ask you, and, and we want to, um, uh, respect that aspect of, uh, sur- surveying indigenous people's, uh, grounds. When, when you do, ground disturbance is basically the threshold.
Right.
For the archaeological, uh, surveys.
The funds are being reimbursed by grants, though.
Did we discuss this at the last meeting?
I hear a lot about grants, I'm just saying, trying to get that.
No, these we get, this CLG grant, we get every single year, and in fact, we, we lowball the expense and the grant. This year, we received $12,700 back.
So what would be, what would, would that building stand there right now, today? What would this, if we, you have this grant, what would it be utilized to do specifically with that property?
It would not.
It would not, yes, only if, in fact, if it had been demolished, is what you're saying, if I understand you correctly.
Yes, this, the survey is only for if it gets demolished, if it doesn't, that money doesn't get spent.
I don't, I don't foresee that happening within the next year, so I'm not so sure if that should be budgeted in here. Um, and I'm a little bit not happy that, unless I missed it on this form here, that it's up there and I don't have it here, if I missed it somewhere, this, this one here?
Um, these are not, um, these are all discretionary grants that we choose to submit or not. Um, uh, grants, the CLG grant is, uh, because we're, uh, we're one of the CLG communities with the state, um, we automatically reapply for that, funding every year pays for a CLG coordinator.
Right.
It's, uh, I oversee that department, and I, I check the grant, and I'm aware of what it does, and I, go to a lot of the commission meetings, but, um, but I don't actually administer that grant.
So how long does that grant do for, I mean, if, if nothing happens for a year, does that go in perpetuity in some way?
So this is a, there are eighteen-month grants, and they go from January 1st until, uh, September 30th of the following year, so this grant would go from January 1st of, um, 2021 till September 30th of 2022. So these, so those grant funds could still be applied in the following fiscal year, if that's when the project was done. Um, like I hear you telling me that on June 30th of 2021, nothing will have happened with the YMCA building, eighteen months from now. So if that's the case, that work doesn't get done, the grant is still available to do that work until September 30th of 2022.
And it's only available for that specific purpose?
So, so each year, we, um, the commission, uh, you, you appoint a, um, Historic Preservation Commission every year, that's advisory to you. Every year, they make recommendations on what to include in that grant. Their mission is to, uh, keep the community educated in historic preservation, to do surveys of historic parts of the town, um, to nominate to the register, to update when there's changes, um, and, uh, to create three, uh, educational programs a year for the public. Um, they also, uh, host a, um, uh, old, uh, home award, which is for, for commercial buildings as well as homes, right? So there's a number of programs that are annually, um, annually in this grant. It pays the salary for the person who administers the grant, does the, um, uh, and it pays for these, uh, projects, CLG projects as well.
So out of that 5,500, how much would be utilized on that YMCA building, or assuming it was demolished?
Um, so I don't have that grant budget with me, I can, um, I can look that up and, and get that to you.
So, um, with the, with the CLG, how it works is, we put the same amount of revenue into those expenses, and all of, um, Susan's salary is covered, part of Gary's salary to oversee it is covered, and then all of the expenses of the project, so if we do them, we wouldn't do them, that can reimburse, and we wouldn't, so if we, we, sometimes we have more revenue, we have more expenses, but it's always all covered in full. And if we can't do it, then we don't have the expense and we don't have the revenue.
Even if it exceeds a grant amount, it would be covered?
We'd never exceed the grant.
We'd never exceed?
That's not how, that's not how the role of the CLG works.
So we'd be looking to see, for example, if there wasn't any burial ground or artifacts or whatever else?
This, this would be a very minimal part of any expense for the YMCA. There's, this, this will not make a difference in whether the YMCA is redeveloped or not. I mean, it might make a marginal difference, but it's, it, it's.
It's important to do for Historic Preservation Division, and they, they do have some thresholds, go no-go, decision-making power over development in a historic town, and, but it's a, it's a small amount, there's only certain things, you cannot ask them to fund whatever you want. It's, it's very prescribed, they often turn down things that the commission wants, because it's not within their, within what they're focusing on that year.
And is this activity or action, one caused the village households to be at a disadvantage?
No.
For any actions they've taken, or may take in the future?
No.
No. Okay. Okay, so let's get back to the position. Do we, are we making this suit tonight to keep the first of that, the position at halftime? I'm getting the sense of the board that that's where we're going.
Should we wait?
We can do it again next week?
I don't, I don't need to wait.
Okay, anyone else? You, you're pretty all set, Stephanie?
All set.
Okay, so shall we direct them to leave the position at halftime for another year?
Actually, like thirty something out, it's not halftime, right?
Correct.
Okay, you want to do that?
Sure.
Okay. Ready to move on?
I, I just want to say again, and I, I may have to.
Okay, so noted. Okay, page eight? Any questions on page eight?
Just a question about service agencies, or are there any others that are coming in that we're aware of, or is that where we're at?
There's no others that we are currently aware of, there was the one addition from last year, at town meeting, the senior solutions.
Okay.
I think there's, the timeframe doesn't expire yet for someone to petition for, for an article, has it?
I don't think so.
It hasn't gone expired yet.
I think you can even do it as.
There's still room for someone to apply, so.
Okay.
But, but we haven't received any additions yet.
Okay, we'll flip to page eight, page nine?
Yeah, so this is where we move fire departments, see, partway down is Rockingham Fire Department. That twelve hundred, twelve thousand five hundred went into an article.
Now, this is to establish this fund, is this just Rockingham, or is this department alone? Can you just clarify?
This, this one is just Rockingham, but we would like to set up a funding mechanism for all three departments in the fire equipment fund. The fire equipment fund is established.
And that's what we would like to transfer the twelve five into?
Right, but the twelve five would be a tax increase.
Go ahead, do your.
But this is for not major equipment, this is for, I mean, not, we're not talking fire jobs, obviously, we're talking gear and so on.
Right. Exactly, gear and air tanks.
This year, they're still proposing, that's what they want?
Yes.
I thought we had talked in the meeting and, and in general about buying in bulk as the town's wide departments.
So we had twenty thousand in there, and they would like seventy five hundred in their own budget, and twelve five to be put into the fire equipment fund. That's what they're asking for, instead of putting the twelve twenty thousand into the fire equipment fund.
And this would be what, an article from the floor?
The twelve five would be an article of seventy five hundred, would be in the budget, as it's proposed, but you guys can change.
Would be in the budget, though.
So we're not going to be buying equipment in bulk?
We, we still could.
They want to build the account, they want to leave twelve five to an article to be transferred to the fire equipment fund, but leave seventy five hundred in their own budget, like in case they.
Right, right, but I.
Yeah, we haven't.
I'm following you there, but they're listing what they want this year, whereas I thought we talked about.
Yeah, so this, this listing was before we had talked about buying in bulk. But their reasoning for wanting to leave the seventy five hundred in is like, if they have one fire suit that's expiring, and they need to buy it off several or whatever, if they don't have anything in their budget, they wouldn't be able to do it. Like, I guess they have two people right now whose equipment is expiring next month, so if they zeroed out their budget budget, they couldn't just spend from the fire equipment fund.
And once again, I'll just encourage them to start looking at grant funds, because I, all those things that they're listing here could be covered by a grant. Again, if that is, if you were fortunate, or lucky enough to receive a grant.
That's true.
Yeah. But doesn't, but who's going to, who's applying to the grant? Oh, no, I certainly. Hopefully, we can recoup seventy five hundred dollars. I certainly encourage that, and I don't, and I'm not saying prohibit it, I'm just saying that I hear a lot of talking about grants, and I followed them when I was selling equipment for my employer and.
And this, this telephone thing, that's something they're going to be keeping at that expense?
Yeah, I have that now, right, this is.
Well, I mean, they're claiming it's two minutes before a pager, I mean, if that's the case, every department should have that.
Yeah, I was thinking that too, we, we need to check it out.
Is that really, is it?
I, I, we haven't had a chance, so I haven't, to find out if that's true or not.
But that's what they all say.
Well, I think everyone would have that if that was the case.
Right, what would be really nice of it is if it could reduce mutual aid number, because that's a pretty high number.
Oh, I know, I'd see that happen.
Yeah, but, I mean, if there's some competitive competition.
Well, I think we need to have a little bit more intimate knowledge of that.
Oh, I'm not suggesting, and, and all that would change.
Oh, no, I'm not saying change, I'm just saying.
It's something worth investigating.
I don't think it works that way in the real world. I know the organization that I serve went across the river, trying to find the neighbors, and one's called, I won't mention it here, but it's available through the chief over there, if you want to inquire. Before the tone, I get from Keen sometimes, I'm getting it on my phone, so, you know. You could say it's redundant, you could say it does save maybe some time, but it is beneficial for me, I don't care a page or anymore, and it's all right here in my phone.
Except for mutually, but anyways.
Yeah.
That's a different one, that they came in here and claimed they got two minutes before four or five.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not familiar with this, but. Okay, so we'll get some more information on that. Can we get down to unsafe buildings? You've got, you've got forty thousand under unsafe building expenses.
So we're transferring forty thousand from the unsafe building reserve fund that we created?
Yeah.
Into the budget and revenue, so that we can use it on unsafe buildings. If we don't use it, it goes right back to the reserve fund. So the revenue will match the expenses for that, that's coming from taxpayers' dollars that.
Passed.
The article passed.
Okay, no, I, I just wondered what it was for. And we have a question on page nine. Okay, let's go to page ten, hang on, page ten. You have a note here, Wendy, about need to start depositing here for fire equipment reserves.
Right. Because we do. We haven't yet, but that's just a note that, that's what we need to, and that is what we can talk about next week, or next, in two weeks, when we go over the long term. Because that'll be reserves, these capital projects, see, we put the meeting house ceiling plaster in there. I don't know if that was, that may have already been in your budget, since it's not highlighted. But the, these are the ones where we want to just take a good picture of the long term.
Any questions on page ten for anybody?
Just quickly, I, I don't know if I see it in this one, it was in the last one, it was called outside maintenance in addition to all the other maintenance under recreation? It was five thousand dollars, and you said you would get the answer.
Yeah, that's one of, there's two things, I think we did go over, but.
You said, you said tennis court, redoing the tennis courts every other year.
Employees.
Oh, right, the tennis court.
But they're asphalt, so I, I question why we would redo them every two years.
Yeah, it was crack filling, basically.
Every two years?
He does the tennis courts one year and the basketball the next. The alternations.
Were repairing them twenty five hundred dollars a year?
I think that was in building to ground maintenance, it was nine thousand dollars, wasn't it?
And, and other maintenance and upkeep of the recreation center.
Could we look into why we're spending twenty five hundred dollars a year? Repair the basketball tennis court?
Well, so on page ten?
Just wonder what line that they're talking about.
I don't know, I don't see it this, this week.
I think it's the nine thousand dollar line.
It was over here last time, it said outside maintenance.
I think it's that building.
I asked what it was, and that was the answer, I guess. Because there was several mainnesses, building to ground.
Ground maintenance is five thousand.
Yeah, I think it's part, pretty sure it's part of that nine thousand, right?
Are we ready to move on to the next page? So you have any comments, or anything right up?
No, I don't care, yeah.
Okay. If you have a question, come back to ten. It's on there, building maintenance, ground maintenance, it's got nine thousand dollars.
Yeah, sure. The one we've been working with, the one I've been working with.
Yeah.
So I have to go back to.
So you have anything, you all set?
Yep.
All right, page eleven. My only comment here is the library item. We've been over the debt service item. My suggestion is that we level fund. The, the library budget to save twelve thousand six hundred dollars. The twenty twenty budget is three seven nine two fifteen, they're looking for a three ninety one eight fifty this year. We did that, we were successful with that last year. Their fundraising is not up to snuff. They only have eight hundred dollars of fundraising this year, and last time when the library was here, we said, questioned them, and the answer we got was that they have another one coming up in the spring, so. I don't know. They were able to find the other money from the previous year, so I, I think we can repeat that again. Any comments? Just mentioned level funding the library fund budget, the, what was it, here, save twelve thousand six hundred? Okay, you all set on that? Um, we're successful, I, you're willing?
Sure.
When we put it on as an article anyway, and I mean, they can, yeah, they can always change it if the town meeting, or if I can, I can, they, they will do it, just depends on who shows up to the meeting.
Okay.
I think a big part of it is the anticipation of a fourth percent increase in the health insurance these days for them, because all of them are on the center, and that's gone, that increase has gone. But they had to put together their budget before we made our decision.
Well, I still think we should level funding, because that may even.
Yeah, no, that's what I mean, I think they can, might be able to do that.
Well, that's just. Page twelve.
Are we doing it?
I, I did change it.
Okay, well, you guys still awake over there?
Yeah.
I was talking to your brother, and Mike's over there. They're still with us, probably, aren't they?
I'm still awake, I haven't had my coffee yet.
Oh, okay, I know, it's really for you. Okay, page twelve, cinema expense. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I have, I just have new information, we owe you a list of the equipment, which we'll have for you, except I have it kind of verbally, which is the most important thing is the popcorn machine to replace.
I was just going to ask about that, I didn't see it listed anywhere here, that's why.
Yeah, it was in the, in an older, when, when the committee discussed it, that was number one, and it's still number one. And that's about twelve thousand dollars. And then we recently found out that we need to provide, or, equipment for the hearing repair, which we don't have, that might be something we can find a grant for, but that's something that we'll need, and that's probably two to five thousand, so it would be covered in what's in the budget, you just ask them for detail. And so, that's what we would look at for that, for that fifteen thousand dollar.
Okay, so what is?
The popcorn machine's not in here.
It's not.
Yeah, I'm just updating, now she speaks.
Which is twelve to fifteen, I thought.
Yeah, or twelve, I think we get it for twelve. We'll need to, or what we might be able to do is get some, buy some stuff, oh, no, we can't, yeah, we can't, earlier this, before this fiscal year is in. I'm not sug- suggesting that we change this budget at all, I'm just letting you know what I know.
What they'd like to propose to do with fifteen thousand dollars, the popcorn machine and the repair equipment.
The Opera House Committee did not meet last night, they were going to meet last night.
So it's been removed from this budget we're working on?
It's not been removed, I'm just, I'm just providing more detail. Like, the, this.
You just said, I'm not, I don't want to change this budget.
Correct.
So we actually have to put fifteen in here?
No, it's. No, 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 we don't have, is the FY twenty one, the, the green highlighted?
It's the repairs and, and maintenance of, of equipment for cinema.
Yes.
It's in green, it's fifteen thousand.
Out of curiosity, what's?
That's for the four K projector, CLM, I see.
So they were supposed to meet last night to, those were, when we initially put together the budget, those were the Opera House's high level ideas. As they met more, they were supposed to meet last night to finalize your list, and they did not meet. What they would like to propose is the popcorn machine and the equipment for the hearing repair.
But those items, those are much more than fifteen thousand dollars, those are long-term, big-ticket items, so it was just to give you a flavor of what, what is going to come, is going to be a multi-year plan for upgrades to the theater.
The four K projector, I know that at one point, when Brooke was here, doing the budget, you said something about they could update the current one?
Maybe, maybe not.
The four K, which could save us a lot of money.
Yeah, that's.
Where's buying grand old four K?
That's not as much of an option as we thought. But, but we're, we're not even close to, to.
And the lights, the light, the ceiling and the light here, soon, that's the plaster that, hopefully, to repair the fallen plaster or something?
No, that's, that would be other, more intense repairs, because the, well, actually. well, actually I'll hold on, we think, we might charge the ceiling repairs there, just small ceiling repairs. But the, the funding next year is just gonna be barely enough to, to do the popcorn machine and the um audio system.
What's the? What's the lights, are they, is that the ones that don't work currently, or?
No, that's, that's the um.
Or is that something that's long-term?
No, this is a thing that goes at the front of the stage, that would be actually good for um live theater and um performances. Um, not just shows that like mainstream puts on, but also shows that, that we put on, it's something that works for both.
Go ahead. Yeah, what do you?
Not, not working right now.
What, what's wrong with the current popcorn machine? Get too pooped to pop, or what?
Yeah. And that's actually, I mean, it smokes and yeah, it's, it's past its prime. I mean, I can get any more details if you want, but it's, it's causing problems.
One out.
I am, actually, via.
And there's theater equipment, we've got five thousand dollars there, what's, what's with that? It's a forty-five hundred dollar increase. We've had a thousand, then we didn't budget it.
Yeah, I think that, let me find out and tell you, I think I know what it is, but I don't want to tell you, um, tell you the wrong thing.
I know it's offset by the theater maintenance that was reduced, but it'd be interesting to see what that is. Thirteen, page thirteen, that's growing up to the highway and stuff. After cemetery operations.
Theater equipment, I had asked that question way longer ago. That same question you did ask, I'd ask a long, long time ago.
And those were the two that are on this list that we owe still, that the, the Opera House committee is going to finalize.
Okay, are we ready to go to page fourteen? Class two paving grant, when do we always go again for that? I know we're not gonna get any now, is it two more years we gotta hold on to?
Two and three.
Two and three? I just wanted to make a note of that, the board letter, that's all. So you figure we're gonna be 24 maybe before we get in?
I think it's 23. I've got that written, at least I can tell you. Twenty twenty-three calendar, or budget, or probably summer 2022, so. So the FY23 budget.
Okay, on that same page, um, in your blank, the 21 budget proposal numbers, because if you look at that, the same ones are there for 20 budget and 20 anticipated, but yet the number totals on the bottom are different. You got two, seven, two, eight, eight, four, eight, four, and then on the 21 proposal, the same numbers listed. Sixty-seven, six, three, six, nine, three, one, four, four, eight, four, nine, two, one, six, it says two, seven, seven, four, nine, six, two. So is there something, whatever the 21, one, eighty-eight, I guess, I don't know, what went up or what went, it's revenue though.
I'm so sorry, I'm not following what you're asking. I, I'm sorry. Can you just say that one more time?
Yeah, if you look at those last three columns, the numbers are all identical. Sixteen, seven.
No, the, the, in order to level fund this, the highway, so that the expenses match the revenue, the property taxes went up. In FY21, they went up twenty-one thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars.
I, I, I know that, but the numbers, you add those same three dot clubs, five or six numbers that are not gonna equal two, seven, four, nine.
Right, well, it's because the expenses are different.
No, those numbers don't equal, those numbers don't have anything to do with each other. This two, seven, four, nine, six, seven, two is the difference of all of the non-property tax revenue and the expense.
No, it just, it just looked odd to me, that's why I just tried to make sure it was near that, that's all.
Yeah, it does look odd, but it's.
Cause the, but the budget from FY20 to 21 changed. The property tax numbers change depending on the expenses and the other non-property tax revenue.
Okay. Anybody else on 14?
Yeah, and just note the two hundred dollars, which is ridiculously low revenue.
Yeah, we did talk.
We have to increase those fees, but we haven't budgeted for that, but we need to increase those fees.
We can always change those after the fact, if we have to.
Yeah. And cause it's revenue, you know, bring concern.
Okay, um, are we ready to go to 15?
Yeah.
Differential pay is quite high, why is that?
It's, so in the previous year, I was just, um, I had just got here for the budget and so I was thinking, when we did the budget, we were thinking the overtime was gonna be more, but it's actually, if you we're gonna come in closer to, it's out of fifty-fifty for overtime differential, so over, between overtime and differential, we're actually not increasing at all. It's just that one's going up and one's going down. Cause we had overtime pay at sixty-four.
Yeah, I, I.
And the differential at ten, but to closer.
I wonder why it's so high.
It's not, it's, it's not so high, it was just allocated wrong. We have more differential pay than we do overtime.
And now we know what it is, cause this was all lumped into wages previously, but we wanted to get a handle on it.
Right, in FY19, you guys budgeting, you asked us to pull it out of, I, um, I mean, I'm sorry, FY20, you asked us to pull it out. We started allocating it in FY19, but when we did the budget in FY20, we hadn't had an actual figure yet.
So. Dramatics in form here, public works director position, are we ready to discuss that tonight? Comments?
Sure, when, when are we gonna discuss it?
Right now.
Okay.
Go ahead, you wanna start off?
Nope. You asked if we wanted to discuss it, I asked when would we discuss it if we didn't discuss it. These are the things we need to discuss.
Okay, so we can discuss it now. So with, with the board's pleasure.
I've said several times tonight that we have to reduce taxes. And to do so, we are overstaffed. And that's how you will do it.
Okay, Ben, you have a comment?
I don't, I'm not one hundred percent convinced it's a necessary position. I don't know if it's something that should be just part-time. If not, I wasn't on the board when you guys brought it back, I know it went away and it came back. But I'm not convinced it needs to be a full-time position.
Okay. I, I, I always have a thought here when it comes to this, for the same reason. We know that, and Mike's committed himself, that we can't do this with other the RFPs. So how do we handle the RFPs, et cetera, et cetera, that need to get done? And the scheduling, sort of, I, I assume you're doing the scheduling, correct, Albert? Kirk, make a wrong.
We don't have any projects, we're a maintenance division. We have staff that can write RFPs. We brought the position back to try it, what we were promised we would get. Very expensive position, if you look at it, it will remove two cents.
Oh, I, I agree with that.
We don't have any projects coming up that we're gonna do for maintenance. We have a municipal manager, we have executive assistant, we have other folks who can write grants.
Okay. Stefan, you have comments?
I've said here, of course, the history, yes, both with and without, um, what I would is ask the department head. I've seen the list of the proposed projects with the bill to the board, but if, if, then you were not to be here, what would you see that would not get done that should be done?
I think I'll list up and I can have it next week. There's some head balls, repaying, head ball would took contract to someone?
It was in the uh.
Yeah, we have, we, we gave you a lot of this.
Yeah. Well, I think, actually, it was in your under RFPs completed July 18th to October 9th, uh, 2019. Dated January 3rd, 2020, memorable to Wendy, remember?
You want him to answer your question?
Well, yeah, that's why I was, I was wondering, you know, I'm looking at it here. I know we tried to probably uh put some priority on the stuff that had to be done. I know right now we're looking at um reducing paving next year in the amount of fifty thousand, we're looking at reducing, the reduction of contract sidewalk services in the amount of fifty thousand, so that would be uh, you know, what does that equate to, say for example, fifty thousand in contract sidewalks? How many feet is that of sidewalk that would not get done?
If we were talking about one down to thirty thousand, fifty thousand down to thirty thousand sidewalks.
Was this decrease?
Why would that?
Well, I'm just, I'm just curious, I'm just trying to think, the, you know, if we allocate monies elsewhere, you know, maybe we wouldn't be reducing sidewalks by fifty thousand, I'm just.
But just a correction, we're not, we're not reducing paving necessarily, we're not increasing it like we were planning present schedule for the um paving um project.
Two hundred and fifty is.
We're leaving it steady, we're not reducing it, we're just not increasing it like we had planned, we had, we had originally thought.
We're not increasing it, but it says here we're decreasing the expense.
Right, but I mean, it still, it remains steady, so it's from, from this current fiscal year. As opposed, it, it just means that we will get perhaps a little less paving done than, than is on the paving schedule. Or everyone would have to reallocate how things are gonna get um paid.
Get a cost estimate in your thousand feet of five-foot concrete sidewalk and what that would cost. Compared to asphalt. So if we did a thousand feet of five-foot concrete sidewalk, we're roughly thirty-eight thousand six hundred sixty-four. If we did the um proposed sidewalk work, six hundred foot in concrete, two hundred fifty foot in asphalt, we're thirty thousand, so. I mean, I know there's a lot of things you can do with the, that, that position equates into about a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars of expenses, but uh, I'm just thinking of what may or may not get done if that position was not there.
Money history shows that projects don't get done, that's why we have to keep a balance in the highway department.
I think maybe he should not speak to it, just cause he.
Yeah, so about a year ago, I went to the then manager and said that we're not doing any progression, we're, as my tunnel says, we're maintenance, and that's what we were doing, a lot of maintenance got done, but there's a lot of big culverts that we have that are failing, they've been failing since Irene. And uh, they're gonna need to be done, what happens when they fail? The roads are gonna fail. And who's gonna, and who's gonna engineer these projects? It's not as simple as throwing a piece of pipe in there. Now, that's just one example. Burke Park in Blake Street, if he wasn't here, who would have done all that engineering on the earthwork? I can't do it.
We probably wouldn't have done it, cause it wasn't our project, it wasn't our project, we got talked into it. It's a six-figure position.
It needed it.
We could subcontract the things we need to do.
Yeah, can I check out the first?
You're gonna pay more.
We, you were gonna pay five hundred thousand dollars in the future, you got it, you got it.
We had a full-time DPW person, it was a village project that we got talked into doing early because it would save all this money.
It did.
We may have not voted that way, which I wasn't in favor of.
Save two hundred thousand, we, we got it to three hundred thousand, and we got a better project. And we got it earlier, I mean, time value of money, the, the people who lived there got the project, what, four years earlier, something like that?
This position saves a ton of money, whether you believe it or not, and he has, over the years, he's been here. And the money he's made when he wasn't here in a full-time capacity, being hired as part-time is ridiculous. And that's what we're gonna go back to, we're gonna hire outside firms.
For what projects?
For any, any good project that requires an engineer.
Projects?
Any project that requires.
In his list that he prepared while working here.
Yeah.
What projects will we need to subcontract or have outside engineering?
High, high hill drainage.
That isn't in the budget.
Yeah, it's gonna be an article.
It's gonna, it's gonna be a time you're gonna need it. And you're not, you're gonna pay for it.
Yeah, at this, at this stage, that's all we have.
We've been paying for it for years. He's done a lot this last few months, he's been here a lot. RFPs, the manager's gonna have time to put all those together? I doubt it. Shane made me try it, and I failed miserably, so he called Everett up to do it. You're gonna need the position, that's my opinion, you can take it for what it's worth.
Appreciate it, there's a three cent increase in the tax with shifting a bunch of stuff around that'll still get passed on to the taxpayer.
I realize that.
So we're looking to cut some spending.
I realize that.
In, in a tight budget. We've gone through this thing, we're, we're discussing five hundred dollar items to, to go, we keep going and going to reduce spending. And now we have two point eight four cents more to go.
I don't think it's good practice to cut a position like this, not at all. It's not, it's not good to the taxpayers, it's gonna cost them more money in the long run.
I, I just wanted, I would say also, if you look at the last two meetings, when town meetings, there was support for this position to come back.
A lot of support.
Cause we had a bunch of projects coming up, we had the downtown project, we had the downtown project.
We still have projects coming up, we have a lot of projects coming up.
What, what are those?
Not, not this year, we don't. That was a big project, that's.
We have pating on the schedule.
That's what convinced me to, for, for my vote to bring the DPW back, and what we were promised, I didn't see. We had big projects coming up, that's why we brought the position back.
We have a lot of storm.
And we still have projects coming up.
We had big projects.
I know where you're saying that we don't have projects coming up, we have a paving schedule, we have to, and here too. We've got state regulations that are gonna be coming in line now for, for these pulver projects, for the hydrologically connected roads. We have to be thinking for the long term. I know we're in a situation now, because our debt services are very high, that this is the, overall, the budget is a big hit. But if you reduce, if you get rid of this position, I don't know if we'd ever be able to bring it back, because who in their right mind would come to a town that brings that position back and, and then two years later, they bring it again?
I don't know, I don't know, but they did that the last year.
But I think it's short.
But in the, in the, for your long-term vision, you have to act, you have to reduce your spending for the short term, you can't continue to keep spending money the way we do.
I think we have town support, according to the last town meeting for this position.
Well, we would see what happened at town meeting day.
Then we leave it as is, and if people wanna cut it, then they, then they can put on the floor a reduction.
Okay, I disagree, not in favor of reducing, um, increasing taxes three cents. In addition to the rest of everything.
And it's the highway, the highway fund is going up, I mean, if it's increasing, it's, it's what, at twenty-one thousand? So it's a half a cent for highway, and highway is majority of what services are to the town, and you said earlier, we would not be reducing services. If we eliminate this position.
I disagree.
We would be reducing services.
I disagree.
We would definitely reduce services.
I disagree.
Okay.
Ton of stat here.
Not really, I mean, we can show you, we have.
We'll show you. Wait, there's more that, that needs to be reduced.
Question, did you do any engineering on that Burke Park, or was it done?
No, did all the road, did the profile of alignment, cross-sections, all the earthwork?
Sidewalks?
Dufrane Henry.
He could have done the whole things, if the village had chosen.
Dufrane did the water shore.
It was built into the bond, right?
Village didn't want a DPW position.
They don't, they didn't.
They made a position, did it cost them much money to not fund that position, to subcontract their work?
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to get some information on the floor.
Yeah.
Dufrane did the engineering design and the engineering, uh, supervision of the water wastewater. We paid them for just the supervision, sixty thousand dollars, for, for supervising, uh, Burt Lake and Mill Street. Well, for, yeah, Burt Lake and, so for maybe three months of work. Everett did the elevations, he did stormwater, he was out there watching what was happening, he re-engineered as it was happening. His personal knowledge of the history of the town and where the stormwater goes was super important at, at that point, because, um, if, if we had had to hire an engineer who didn't know the town, they wouldn't have known, um, to look out for those things. So you have a significantly better product at, um, hundreds, at least one hundred thousand, probably two hundred thousand, we don't have all the final numbers yet, less than you were planning on paying. So that one project, um, shows is, shows the benefit of that position. Um, coming up in the future, the stormwater, um, uh, requirements are, are much greater than they, they have been in the past. We're talking about a stormwater utility, um, that's something that Everett would be hugely, um, valuable in, in looking at. We're going to have to find other funding for, for stormwater, it's, it's going to be very expensive. And there aren't going to be, there's going to be grants to find funding, but there's not going to be grants to fund it. It's just, it's just too expensive, that's going to have to be funded by the property. And that position is necessary, Shannon and I won't be able to, it, it'll take away from our other work, um, doing the RFPs.
So...
I don't even know a lot of information on those RFPs. I wouldn't be able to come up with that information.
When, when's our next like meeting before we finalize this by twenty first? That's two weeks.
And that's where we're also going to look at long-term planning, because the points of debt are next year and the following year. So that's what we want to show you, is how the, the taxes can, can level off. There would be some reduction, but you can't expect a reduction every year, I, I mean, that's just not reasonable.
No.
It went down last year.
We've also had...
I say that every time, because we move money around.
No, it went down last year because the value went up.
Well, we also borrowed from the fund balance, so that, that'd be a different issue, we're trying not to...
But you borrowed less than you did the year before.
And you had a huge fund balance, the taxpayers had already...
If your spending is out of control, we, we, and we borrow money, I mean, it's just, it's a bizarre concept to go further into debt. Spending more than we have.
We have found serpents that...
Rather than, I mean...
I guess the, the negative aspect to look at is when we did the paving and the sidewalks downstream, and we hired a outside engineer from Burt and Spill to do it before Everett came on. And you look at what we got for the bucks, so, I mean, definitely might...
What do you mean?
Well, everybody complained about the work to get done.
That was project management.
Well, that's your opinion of it, and...
The engineer didn't pave the road, the engineer didn't put the tires out.
They think we're here overseeing the project.
We hired a DPW to oversee project management, that's when we brought him on.
Okay, I'm just...
Project management, I don't want to rave about Burt Street, which was done by...
Let me, let me address this.
Professional...
One at a time, one at a time.
This is the meet to that before, this was a spec that was put out before I was here. Mike will tell you, it's a nighttime paving job, it's not project management.
Who, who was supposed to manage it? Who was supposed to be responsible for the, for the finished product?
We've gone for it, Mike was there, it was a nighttime thing, but it was no spec that said anything about the height of those, uh, catch, the drain channels, we've been through this.
It was my decision, and even though we've talked about it many times, we created the...
Who?
When does it end? Can't fix it. Take the common time comes again, redo it. Have a comment?
Without waiting one way or the other, I just want to go back to where both of you were on the board, some was it, now, close to ten years ago or longer, when this position was cut by the select board, along with another position, there was town support to do that at the time. There must have been logical material behind that to base the decision to do so on. So, what was the reason? Why would you do that if you realized later on that you would spend more money with an engineer, with outside engineering firms? So, you, you know, and you know, you were on the board, so what was the logic there at that time to do what you're, what is maybe considered now?
The logic there was the fact that we didn't do a lot of the paving work or whatever had to get done. We kept putting it off, which is where we got into the loophole that we are now, and why we're trying to do more and increase the paving balance. The idea was a tax situation that we're dealing with today. We needed to cut the budget somewhere, and that was a position we saw, and I think there's a personal intuition, uh, intuition that came in, right? Uh, to be reminded with you, and, and, uh, I think that's all weighed into it, maybe not so much, but the fact of the fact was the matter, that was the tax rate and, and the fact that we didn't do a lot of projects because of that to save money, that's where it all led to. And now we're back up to spending hundreds of thousands of, of money for paving projects and other projects to bring it back up. We, we weren't doing, uh, you know, copper replacement back then, that started a little while ago, probably three or four years ago. That's added to the, to the total bill. And as Sue says, it, it's voted at town meeting, so, you know, we can only suggest that if the town wants to cut it, every time somebody comes up and says, "Let's cut two hundred thousand out of it," it gets drowned out, and it gets, generally goes back through, and it gets paid. So if we have the twenty-first, the board will make a decision. Could be presented with, to the next, the next meeting, with it and without it.
Do you guys want to print it with or without, or just...
Well, we know what, what we could save if that was just... Well, I realize that, so, I don't think we need to change the budget, I think Sue's got probably one, the easier tack, is to leave it in the budget, and if the people so desire to cut the budget, then we can cut it where we want. And if that's a point that they say cut a hundred thousand dollars off the budget, then we got an idea where we can go. If that's their desire. And what I'm saying is, we've got, there is time between now and twenty-first to, I'm sure people are watching, I know I've had feedback when I spend time out here. But we can take a look at, step back, take a breather, and make sure that that's what we want to do, or not, not what we want to do.
It's two and a half seconds.
I know, it is.
Oh, well, you're asking us to see it when it's done.
Right. Well, I, I understand it's what it is without. I think I'm asking at the moment to, we make the decision on the twenty-first.
Do we need more information?
Well, I want to take a look, maybe and see what, what we have for projects, I want to hear some...
We're playing here with people speaking up about personal, personal things, and why we need this position. If we don't need to, and, and valid points getting negated, and, and people getting upset because I'm bringing up things that I feel were done incorrectly, that cost people money. What, what, I mean...
All right, all right, then, let's go.
What are we doing in the winter months with, with RFPs and engineering and...
We are doing RFPs and engineering, and we're doing long-term planning.
Six-figure full-time position.
He's, he's busy.
A long-term plan?
He's, we do a lot of long-term planning, or he does, that's what all of these schedules are about, is long-term planning. Yeah, that's, that's what we're trying to do for the, for the next, for the meeting next time, so that we can give you, uh, a consolidated highway projects and equipment and fire. We want to get all those together, and it, it takes, it takes work to, to put all those plans together. So Everett's critical to that. He's, he's busy. Um, we actually looked at his hours, I just got it today, though, um, what he looks, um...
I mean, we already have that plan, right? We have updated sidewalk plan.
We just updated it, we have to update it.
We have that plan, we have the sidewalk plan.
We'd have to pay someone to update these.
Correct.
Or, or not do it, or not, not do planning, or not do paving, we get behind on paving.
I'm not suggesting that.
That's, that's what would happen, I, I believe we would get behind on paving. Unless you want to contract out for someone for the same amount of hours or close to the same amount of hours, which would be more money. Contracting out would be more money.
I disagree with that.
Do you disagree that contracting out is more money per hour?
I disagree that we would spend more.
Okay, well, I think we did in the past, spend more, and then we lose the oversight of the highway department, because an internal person can do things that an external person can. Actually, our, our situation with Dufrane is a great contrast, because they're really solid engineers, and I'm happy with them, but, but they're expensive.
They're paying for it, they're...
Yeah, and the way that I think the village is able to swallow that is that much of it is paid for by grants. Most of it is paid for by, um, the loans, the negative interest loans. Yeah, yeah, well, negative, and negative interest is essentially a partial grant, forty percent grant. So, so we pay Dufrane on a total dollar basis a lot. Um, they do planning, they do engineering, um, it's not always just when we have projects, but there's, there's ongoing permitting requirements. Um, there's also actually a lot of coordination with the state that Everett has to do or gets to do. The annual reporting, um, we have actually the Dco Street Bridge coming up. Um, hopefully someday the Bridge Street Bridge will, will come up again, the Church Street Bridge is happening, that's all going to take coordination with V-Trans, so there's...
We, we need outside engineering for all those things, right?
Not for coordination, no, because V-Trans has engineering.
What do you mean coordination? Do we need an engineer to coordinate?
Yeah, yeah, and, and to... Yes, and, um, just last week, week and a half ago, we had a meeting with those engineers and just pulling water, wastewater together.
We need to bridge the bridge we hired outside organization to engineer.
Okay, I wouldn't agree with that, I don't know.
If you mentioned water and wastewater, why are we, why are we getting involved with town?
Well, whenever he works for, and he's, it actually hasn't done any work for water, but wastewater, like, we have a break in the road, everyone's affected, we have to coordinate, it would cost much more in terms of dollars and in terms of just loss of, of usage of the road if we didn't coordinate, when we had that, um, sewage fill by seven eleven. Um, highway was very much involved in that, because, because they have to be.
We bill, um, the wastewater department for Everett's hours, for whatever he...
Yeah, it wasn't, it hasn't been that much, it's been about a week total.
Forty hours for, so far this year.
What's, what's, what's the engineer have to do with your water break by seven eleven? Did I miss something?
I'm just saying, it's not exactly... He actually did, there was, he can help figure out how to put things back together without hiring...
Or did the wastewater and highway guys put it back together?
Yeah, I mean, the, the wastewater guys, but there's all kinds of situations like that, like the one was, he schooled Street one.
He did school in Acton Street.
The school in Acton, that was engineered, right?
Yeah, we did that one three times.
Uh, we did, that, that was not a mistake.
Twice, because we couldn't do it, we didn't have the equipment to get deep enough to do it.
Was it engineered?
Yeah, he did.
Well, but we did it incorrectly after it was engineered, or?
You're talking about school, school Street that section?
Yes.
This, the breakdown here was not engineered, I, I had little, minimal involvement, it was just orchestration.
Couple phone calls, that was it.
I know, but that's what she's referencing, sorry.
All right, so tell them about school Street. I'm just saying, the coordination is really important, sometimes you need an engineer, sometimes you need a highway director, public works director, but you did, do you want to tell them about the school Street, I don't know if it matters?
That was one of those small symbols lying, some coordination without a bit of RFP, good results, overseeing it when they did it.
Okay, it seems like we can't quite get our heads on this one, uh, at this time, I think Stefan knows where he is. Twenty-first, we come here every period to make a decision, one way or the other. Moving along, let's go down to, this line is contract services, you got surveying fifteen thousand? Some of the, that is, what's going on with that?
Yeah, let's try to figure out where the right-of-way lines are. Everett, that's the...
Peter, I, I'm going to try to stay on the call, but I've got to leave the hotel, because I'm holding up about twenty families. So, um, if I get cut off, that's why, just playing it ahead.
Yeah, we're, we're almost done, the rest of the stuff on the agenda isn't really, uh, you know, that pertinent.
Well, I'll stay on if I can.
Yeah, okay, all right, no, no problem, I, I got you.
All right.
Okay, so, going back to survey, what, what's that, you got fifteen thousand there for contracted services, or engineering services?
Yeah, surveying, which is what we had, had in, we have a current budget.
Well, that, that was one out shortly, now things are getting caught up, and one of the things we have to put out is, uh, get that RFP out there, so we can do it from Joe Devoe or a couple other local surveyors to start working on it. It'll be a multi-year process, not going to be someone going to do these right away in a year or two. Uh, but even Mike can attest to it, there's no one road you can go into a town, into this town and find out if someone's working on it. The rain wave right there, you can't point to it, and every road is different, the rods, the rods are different on every road. You can't assume the three rods, so, generally you can assume that out in our country, but if you do a project, there's no way you can.
Blake Street, we did that one, Burt Street.
Yeah, Burt Street, yeah. So this, so we might eventually have a map that, that helps the next night down the road, or even the odd night, because this could take, you know, five, like a ten-year process.
I know they're three inside the river, I know.
You know, Ellen, Ellen had a good record start, non-stop, there's still not official documents, but...
That's why I still use it.
You still use it, yeah.
Okay, pavement made, if you've got a note here, this not full value road, is that because we're reducing the fifteen thousand? I, we got to go back to, how, some of them we changed around from the...
To do the next stage of plus value road, we got a hundred million, so, did with that for the year, and to do the other half, so it's like, it wasn't put in there. Well, it will stay as is, plus value road mainly the traction element, you know, just a couple spots. We did the, uh, the worst, it was done this summer.
And before the person's on fifteen.
I'm trying to, I can't use the phone, so be quiet.
We hear you, Sue.
Yeah, I know, I'm trying to figure out how to mute my phone, and then I can't, so...
Okay, um, take sixteen.
Does that program set up for real time?
I'm making changes.
So we have a new one at the bottom with, um, keeping the area thirty hours and small ones?
People's Creek Bridge, what are we going to do with that, folks?
Yeah, that's not even close to what we need by the start.
Because there's not a thousand dollars there, I know we got to think about that.
Correct.
When's that, when's that scheduled for, from twenty-three, twenty-four?
Wait, really? We talked a lot, uh, a couple meetings ago about starting off at twenty, and then maybe stepping up a year after, like, thirty, and then forty. And I think leaving fifty or maybe sixty after that, just to get the process started.
You need to think about putting some money aside for that.
And there will be some bills coming in, you know, the engineering has started, so there will be bills coming in. A little bit this year, but most... A little bit this year, but mostly rolling in next year. The year after.
And that agreement will be coming to you next meeting, I expect.
And we'll reduce the sidewalk replacement? What's like?
From fifty to thirty. First proposal you saw was fifty thousand. Maybe you'll see the list there. Stefan, Stefan pulled that earlier. Tell us, talks about, uh, sections that'll be done.
I know, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I know it's not pertinent, but it is because we all are Americans. Just, uh, kind of news organization thing from NPR here that says the US military bears, US military base in Iraq has been attacked by Iranians. Anything else on page sixteen? Seventeen. Repairs. Uh, eighteen, uh, let's go to page eighteen. Nineteen. Sorry, let's turn it over there.
Sorry?
Okay. Last page, fine. Any questions? Hearing mail, I guess we're turning to that review.
Was he new or not? We just spent several hours on that.
I think we might shake the penny off, I think.
I don't think so.
I'm not sure. Probably, if we could, because I no longer get asked about this. With the equation of no DPW director and an equation with that, could you have that tonight if you're typing it in there?
As soon as she gives that to us, we can just subtract.
Two and a half, yeah.
Which would put us at what? Below level funding, right?
We'll find out in seconds, Stefan, once she gives us that number.
I think you're gonna find that someone.
So, I need like fifteen minutes to come, to pull these numbers.
Well, we get, we get time, I believe, if that's our, Chairman, and the rest of the board, I think.
Well, it is eight thirty.
You guys. Well, we did a couple of that.
We ran over it to discuss also.
Yeah, you guys, we don't want to give you numbers that are not good enough. Shannon, if you're not sure, I mean, we can get you something personally in the morning.
Well, I disagree. The press is here tonight. I know there are people at home watching.
I would just like to say, I don't think that you ever got changes in the tax calculations at eight thirty at night and immediately after you made changes to a budget. I, I can do it for you, but then I don't want you to quote me on the numbers.
Fine. I'm not gonna quote you, but I mean, I like that idea.
I don't think it's necessary to do it right now. I kept somewhat track when I were on the road.
It didn't change that much.
Correct. We didn't change that much.
Yeah.
But that's why I had asked the question if it was real time.
It is.
So the notes you made, which we had before, we had that before. We have had that before. That same program where we sat in this room and then it gave us a, a, a new updated, um, tax rate.
Yeah, so I'll sit over here and do it. Will you guys do that? I can't, it's not in the same spreadsheet. I can put it into the tax calculator.
Okay, we can.
Yeah, it's just, it's just an opportunity for air.
We'll, we'll come back to that. So we can keep this going along here. Uh, Development Office, uh, Gary Fox. Board grant.
This is the updated, um, grant. Due on January twenty, so we're still, um, the team met yesterday. It's still in process. Um, it includes, uh, wayfinding, um, in the, uh, kiosk in the center of town. Let's see, the grant would provide nineteen thousand dollars of that. Um, a, uh, grant for knotweed management provides three thousand five hundred dollars of match. And, um, we're looking for, uh, seventy-five hundred dollars from the development fund for, uh, I should say, up to seventy-five hundred dollars for culvert work. The area at the town rec department between the ski hill and, um, the ball field, um, which is kind of overgrown, has a, a stream that runs down through that area. Uh, so the drainage and culvert would be put in, the area would be leveled and, um, a pump trap installed. Um, uh, mapping services are included and, uh, marketing with the wayfinding. And that's the, the basic number of this grant. The, uh, project team includes a, a cross-section of organizations. Uh, Rockingham Conservation Commission, uh, supports that, uh, supports the project. Um, as does the Bellas Falls Community Bike Project. The Windham Hill Pinnacle Association is a, um, uh, parent company of the Sacramento River Valley Trail Initiative and the Bald Hill Trails. Uh, mountain bike manufacturer, um, Frank the Welder's, um, organization supports it. Uh, the school system is involved. And the, uh, Mont Mountain Bike Association, um, uh, supports it and is involved in the project team. Uh, are there any specific questions that I could answer? Yes, please.
What was the pump track?
I was just going to.
You got it. Good question.
Gary's going to question me, so.
So, um, it's a, um, it's a miniature version of, uh, when you see dirt bike racing, large tracks. And, um, basically, it's used by all age levels in different ways. So, um, uh, uh, younger elementary school kids, um, get them outdoors using their, um, radio-controlled vehicles that go over the track. Um, elementary, middle school kids ride the track to learn skills, safety skills. And part of the program that goes along with this is, um, school system, uh, rec department and bike project running, um, safety and riding skills programs in the pump track to training grounds. Uh, adults use it to learn about mountain bike skills, so when they go on the steep, um, trails up at the top of Oak Hill, they develop the skills on the mountain bike to be safe doing that in the woods. That's, uh, that's the pump track. Any other questions?
There's a suggested motion in the, um, staff report, in that moment, over one.
Somebody want to make a motion? So, uh, so.
Talk in.
On a memo, second page. Are there matching grants in the, matching funds in the area somewhere?
Yes, the, um, uh, there's a Moscona Grant for thirty-five hundred dollars for the, um, trail maintenance with knotweed issues. It's match. And there's, uh, up to seventy-five hundred dollars for, um, the, um, culvert and, uh, the site work for, for water mitigation, um, at the rec area from the development fund.
So, seventy thousand grants from the work, is there any matching funds in the town?
Yes, the, up to seventy-five hundred dollars from the development fund, uh, for, uh, whatever the cost is for the culvert, um, at the rec area at the pump track.
Do we have that in the budget anywhere?
No, we, well, we would put it in the budget. We get it. Or, I mean, that's something we can find money for. It's actually, be a good improvement to have in any case.
The, the, um, proposal from the, uh, development fund is it doesn't impact the, um, the annual budget or the tax rate.
Right, 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 because it's from the development fund. So it doesn't, it's not.
How much money is it?
It's the seven, seven thousand, then just.
Up to seventy-five hundred, whatever the, you know, site work culvert ends up costing.
Alright, then I'll, uh, make the motion for the Rockingham Select Board to move to approve. Uh, approval to submit the application to the Ramona Door Recreation Economic Collaborative Community Grant Program and authorize the municipal manager to execute necessary documents.
Take your side.
One second. Hope you can make a second for this copy. So you're here still on air? Okay, I think we still need to go with the voice vote for pages. Set us on mute. Okay, hearing mail for the discussion. All those in favor will go aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Most in here.
Do you want to do a roll call? I think voice vote.
Do you want to do voice vote?
I think so.
And?
Ben, aye.
Ben, aye.
Peter, go ahead, aye. Stefan, aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thanks.
What do you have next? The, um, TLR Civilization and Train Station. But these are alternative, um, town meeting articles and we're going to talk about these also on January twenty-first. So if you want to get down the other stuff, that's fine. Um, but they are, uh, samples of articles to present at town meeting. One is for the TLR buildings, is to stabilize the buildings. Remember, we did not get the grant. Um, they're both under twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, so the, um, uh, principle with the, um, TLR grant, uh, the TLR, um, stabilization is that, um, there's some work there that needs to be done to, uh, secure the buildings from further degradation and for safety. Some of the, um, uh, uh, overhead passes that are coming out of the building. The state did not feel like the community had shown that it wanted to preserve the TLR buildings. Because the, the last action that we had on it was town meeting in two thousand and sixteen and we, the, there was an article to demolish the buildings and town meeting voted it down. And they didn't feel that voting down demolition is the same as supporting it, um, you know, voting any funds toward it. So, um, uh, this article says, uh, uh, up to a hundred twenty thousand dollars that the work by, by an engineer is specified in the article. There's, um, it's described in these pictures of it there. And the reason is it's up to a hundred twenty thousand dollars is, um, uh, there is the possibility of, um, the community doing some of the work with volunteer work. And I don't know if they, they kind of wanted to speak to that at all, but, um, that is one of the, um, possibilities that is brought up and brought up. And also up to a hundred twenty thousand dollars because there's low items and high items of each of the engineering aspects.
And, and let's just add, these buildings are do something now or say bye, right?
Yeah.
I mean, this, this is the time to either say bye to the buildings or do something. So this is the chance for the community to make that choice.
Mr. Chairman, let me thank out loud, is there, could our house engineer be involved? Take care of the engineering on that?
I think we're gonna start on here.
I'm a pattern, special engineer. But the point of it is just to ask the community, is, are they worth preserving? Do you care about these buildings? If you do, say yes now. If you don't, then we'll star work you on demolition.
That's not what you're asking. You're asking is to hold me up a hundred twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
It's not a vote to ask them if they want to do anything with the building. It's a voting, it, it's a vote to put a hundred twenty thousand dollars on you, which they have two and a half cents of the budget.
Sure, so.
We just spent two hours. Exactly, that's beating the death and then, uh, try to cut some more funds off of that, some tax money out. Now we're going to add more money than a shame.
So I guess the, the principle is that if, um, if they, if the community wants to save these buildings, there's, there's been a lot of uproar when we demolish buildings. The, the, the state that the YMCA is in, um, people are, uh, screaming that it's, you know, it's their fault. Why didn't they do something twenty years ago? The, the Robertson paper, um, why didn't people do, you know, why didn't the owners do the maintenance when they could twenty years ago? So, um, uh, these buildings can still be saved. If we do this work, we can develop the plans, um, uh, go after the grants and over a five to ten year period, they can be put into the project that you see here. Uh, these are just for your purposes for the January twenty-first. They're being introduced now. So you can look at, um, what this project, uh, the potential for the end use, what it does to the area, um, behind wheatland, but what they used to call below the hill. Behind the Howard Block and behind the Power Avenue and Wheatland. And, uh, the plans, uh, there's a list here of who had input to these plans. And this isn't what the article's asking for, but it's what could be done with the buildings if we preserve them. If we decide, if the community doesn't vote to do the work to stop them from further degrading, then we would never get the support from the grant doors to do the kind of work that these end-use plans have. You know, we, we, um, complain when we don't do stuff to preserve buildings. We, uh, complain that why do we do, um, studies if they don't fit on the shelf? The, the, the reason, uh, sit on the shelf, sorry. The reason a lot of times the studies sit on. The reason a lot of times the studies sit on the shelf is because it's a lot harder to do the work of implementing the studies than to find out what's right to do with them. So anyway, that's, that's why we're suggesting this article. It would hurt, it would increase the tax rate that you don't want. So if people vote for it, we know that they're, they're willing to feel the pain to preserve them. It's worth it to them. So it's not, same thing with the train station, the train station article. The building is in the condition where if it, if it's let go for much longer, that will come down. It's going to be in the same position as the YMCA, as the Robertson Paper Company building. The proposal in this one is for the town to purchase and renovate it. And same thing, up to $120,000 to do that. The, the town would operate just a waiting room area and would sell or capital lease the area for private operators to cover the costs of operating the building. And it would keep the building preserved and in public transit for the Amtrak and Greyhound.
Who would pay to fix it?
So if you look at the grant spreadsheet...
We're, we're, we have grants everywhere, but we don't seem to be receiving a lot of them.
So we do, the, the one that turned down for TLR, what they said was, they, they gave a couple of examples and said, so here's the ones that we awarded in this cycle. They do three cycles a year. We encourage you to reapply this, and the ones that we awarded this year. Here's an example in hard work. This is the fourth time they applied for the grant. So they tell you why they didn't support it and they ask you to do the work and come back. So the primary reason they didn't support this is the community hasn't shown that they want to preserve the buildings. So, so it makes sense that we didn't get this grant. The grants are achievable, the USDA community...
Is Duncan the TLR?
Yes.
So with a statement like that, how do you think folks would get behind spending their own funds to preserve a building? If the grant you wrote showed that they didn't support fixing it with grant funding?
No, they, they said that they, they didn't want to, grants often look for a match portion, right? And so to them, if they're going to invest in the long term, the millions dollars... So, so if they don't have the...
Well, can I, can I take a stab at it? We applied for the grant, but we didn't have a local match. And, and the town and the village has never done anything to support those buildings. And so that's why the community development folks said no.
Yes, they said, show us, the community wants to save it. Show us some skin in the game, come back and apply again for the, the grants to do more of the work. The, this article is just a third of the work that we asked for. And it's just the stuff that's critical to stop the degradation, stop the water from coming in, stop the beam from falling in, it's collapsing the bricks. So it's the, it's the minimum work to stabilize the building so that we can apply for the future grants, work to save them.
And if, if they vote no, then we don't, then we start working on demolition? Or watch it fall down?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, here's my thoughts on that. And I love history. We can't save every building. There was an opportunity for an organization a couple of years ago. The Select Board had an arrangement to try and do something with that. And basically, they weren't able to. We've spent almost three hours, a little over three hours here today, but roughly almost three hours on topic of budget. And this is, you know, we had a directive, I thought, from the board here a few weeks ago to come in. I know I mentioned local funded. Gaetano had mentioned some comments, Peter, everybody had. I, I'm not sure about Sue, but all the work we've just done over the course of the time frame, not just the three hours tonight, if this article was to be voted in the affirmative, and I don't support this article, but we're asking a few people on a Monday night. And we can stack the deck on a Monday night. I've been here long, you know that. We all, you want, want to push your agenda. But I mean, to spend $120,000 on this building, I think it would be better to demolish the building. I realize there's some historical significance there in the basement, but that may be something where we try to critique that area. But, you know, I've spent time not only through recycling center. I go, I eat local, I do some other things local. I have people stopping by my residence saying, hey, I, and I've earned more this year than any year before. I'm thinking of moving from here because I can't afford to live here. And here we are, just gone through all this diligent work. And now we're looking to have, to add more money to the tax rate. And I, I, you know, the, the railroad stations are different topics, but I don't support bringing this forward as an article.
Okay, I just, I just would suggest that it's discussed on Monday night, but it's part of the full vote on Tuesday. Why couldn't it be on the Australian ballot? Why have just 50 people vote on it when anyone can come out and vote on Tuesday on that article?
Could we do that?
Sure. Why wouldn't you?
I'd almost say...
I'm not suggesting to have 50 people decide, that's not a show.
If we're doing that, gee, let's put the library pledge on the ballot. But I think that'd be different criteria.
I agree. Half everything.
You have comments?
No, I, I agree with many things Stefan just said. Although we spent three more hours on this thing, we didn't accomplish much. And now we have $240,000 worth of additional monies that we're asking people. I hear the same thing as Stefan does. And perhaps some folks that, that work in this town hall don't talk to the people we talk to. Well, people are tired of the spending. I just...
And we didn't exercise...
We use terms like we can find it. Like we, if we don't budget for something, you don't spend it. Like if we asked about $7,500, who's going to come from, did we budget for it? No, we'll get it from somewhere else, but just...
I, I didn't say that, I said...
I said that. I said that. If we actually can, I mean, we, we have to be able to be flexible, stuff happens.
Well...
Yeah, this is real life.
If I may...
It's not, it's other people's money.
It is a little bit.
One at a time, folks.
People on this board's money.
And we have found lots of savings for you.
Hey, where...
Well, so I'm a taxpayer too. And, and I hear from a lot of people that we can't afford...
I can't afford to save the TLR building. Me as a taxpayer.
So what I'm saying is that it's not about the short-term two cents this year. It's about the, in five years, the $1,375,000 that goes onto the grant list by saving up. It's reversing, it's reversing that increase.
Who's going to, who's going to pay those taxes on that?
The, the end use plan, the end users.
Which will be who?
Comparable taxes are on here, that's, I don't...
I, I think, you know, I, I, you know, what I, what I mentioned earlier, different ideas and out of the box, that's a favorite term. You know, when I look at Robertson Paper Mill, I had relatives that worked there. But regardless, you know, we spent money because the governor had to have a tent or whatever was criteria. But I thought, gee, you know, instead of spending that money, I would have went out and probably, if I was spending my own money and that was my property, I would have put a gazebo there that would be somewhat permanent to the, to the point where if the organization that now has it sold it, but I'd had that gazebo there. And I think we could have, we could have outdoor live concerts, community gatherings and other public events. Otherwise, now it sits there as a, as a vacant lot.
The town did not pay anything towards that tent or any of that...
Well, do you show up in the, in the warrants here when I was looking at it? Was something in there for the amount of...
Because it went on the town's credit card because we had to secure it that way. But BFADC pays for that, pays the town for it.
Okay.
Every penny of the cost in that thing comes from BFADC.
But would you not agree that that might be a better use for that vacant lot as it is right now? To have something new that maybe the whole community could have partied up, whether it've been a Christmas concert or a live outdoor concert in the fall, in the summer?
No, because we're trying to build a facility there that will add one and a quarter million dollars to the grant.
So we couldn't, in the interim, yank that gazebo out of there in the event someone came here to build a facility there?
We have, we have places we can, we have the Scenic Riverfront Park and Trail System, which is a beautiful spot for gazebo and has concert areas by the poet's seat. We, we have areas like that.
And you'd want to have that outdoor kind of, down there or something, plant or treatment plant?
That's, that's a beautiful trail. You don't smell the treatment plant there.
Okay.
We're getting off the point here.
Anyway, I'm trying to be, sorry, it's just, it's a privately owned property. It's insurance issues, having it used for stuff. It's just, it's a whole separate question that I didn't come prepared to talk about. My apologies for that.
The only comment I can make is that of the two projects, I would probably lean more towards a train station development versus TLR. But there again, why would the town want to become a landlord? We are landlord and as long as you know as well as I do, once you're landlord, your house is landlord. And everybody says, well, we can sell it. Well, I would find that difficult to believe unless it's completely renovated to the town of maybe three quarters of a million dollars. And, you know, the state owned it at one point. They turned it over to Green Mountain Royal Road and everything else. And Green Mountain let it degrade to the point it is now. I think we should start by going back to the law, AOT and the rear road division and say, you guys got this thing into a hole, why don't you cough up some bucks to get it where it belongs?
Peter, I agree with that, but you know what? I'm going to blame a previous select board because I sat here at one point when we had a million dollars in their mobile funds. And we ended up putting it into a damn parking lot up there at the bus terminal, up in Rockingham, when the focal point should have been down here. And that was just my opinion. Gaetano?
Yeah, I don't know, same thing. Why don't they fix it up, the folks are on and out. Why don't they...
They don't want it.
They don't want, oh, it's just a...
Has anyone shown interest in buying it and fixing it right now? Probably not. So why would we want to buy it and hopefully sell it or something?
Because...
Lose the grand list.
But if I may, we bowled both boards and deadline wants to comment, so I won't steal your steam, but have worked on ordinances and plans to deal with buildings to, to prevent what's going to happen or would happen here if nothing happens from our initiative. So, I mean, it's, and I'll leave it, I'll yield to you.
I get right next.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, so my comment is this building is currently owned by somebody with money. Just like what happened with the YMCA building before it got dumped in the dock. Now is the time, if indeed the building is in that kind of shape that is being, you know, vaguely talked about, that it be inspected and that owner be made to make the corrections. As opposed to us, to the town taking on the, or the taxpayer, taking on the burden of fixing up the building that should be fixed by its current owner for its current use of operation. So that's something that belongs to the health officer or the zoning officer or, or the unsafe building issue in the village, on the village side. If indeed that's the kind of things that need to get done that are that unsafe, in that case, we have, we have mechanisms to take care of that without us putting $120,000 into it. And that's my take on it. Take care of it before it changes hands.
Well, then we have, from the village and the town standpoint, the building was at the end of that good street. It's been going on, I think, six years now or five years? Yeah.
That's the house of the tree. That's, that's closely, you know, in second, that's another subject for the unsafe building.
Yeah, well, these things are, well, we're going to bring them back to you at the next meeting. We just wanted you to get a heads up in this meeting.
I saw Shannon come back with a number you wanted.
Sure.
Go over that quickly and then we...
Well, thank you for your input, makes sense.
Chris, don't you have a...
I mean, I, I hate to knock this good work, but you know what? Now I'd like to know what it would be if this, if we did say, put these articles on and how much this would add to it back again. I mean, Gaetano's right, you got to stop spending.
These are different from the budget.
No, I didn't, I don't like that.
Yeah, all the work's been changed.
Well, anyway, we can talk about it next, sometime. Alright, so you want to talk about access permit? I think everyone's here, but I don't know if it needs to be here. Access permit academy.
I think that's one more comment before Gary. I was kind of tuned out when we were talking about the bicycle thing. I actually, I think from the beginning, I've seen great potential in that, in that area. I think we have a prime spot. And I've referenced Burke Mountain, what they've done because of outdoor bicycling.